Webex is now live.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Education Committee meeting. We have all committees today and we are starting with Auxiliary Services with Mrs. Brown.
Good morning, guys. Good morning. I'd like to call to order myself, Jaclyn Brown Chair, Susan Williams, Greg West, and Dr. Tara Jordan. 102, Consider Adoption of the General.
Please adopt. Second.
Get a motion by Mrs. Williams and second by Mrs. Dr. Jordan. Question and answer. Thank you. 103, Consider Approval of October 7, 2025 Auxiliary Service Committee Minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved by Mr. West and second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. Question and answer. 104, Receive Special Recognitions, Mr. Cole.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Look forward to this all month long. One of our favorite things to do is recognize some of our premier professionals. This morning, we're going to start with our operations Employee of the Month.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess it's November, it's officially the holiday season.
Yes, it is.
So this morning, I would like to introduce you to the operations, maybe it's Employee of the Month for the month of November. Gary Malloy, can you come up, please? So Gary is a member of our plumbing department. He's a plumber apprentice, too. He joined us about four years ago and started out as a plumber apprentice one. And before he came to us, he spent a lot of time helping his grandparents at the church that they pastor. He still continues to do that on his off time here, though, as his auntie is his pastor in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay, Gary's single because he still hasn't found the white person. Gary loves to read in his spare time and he loves to help anyone who asks for help. He likes to help around the house, helping the yard, helping the church. Anybody that needs stuff done, he's there at their side. He's starting to explore traveling a little bit and I asked him, what's your favorite thing to do in your time off? And for once, he did not say fishing. It was almost a little refreshing. But anyway, he says he's really just started into it and is starting to enjoy it. And the favorite thing about his job is the people that he works with and the camaraderie within his department. He says it makes the days go by and he really enjoys being at work. So job well done, Gary. Y'all help me. Congratulations. And I'd like to also recognize his work family. Eric Valentine is his foreman and Mr. Forrester Basemore is the director of operations. I'd like to next call up Mario Cesar and we will recognize the Housekeeping School of the Month.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It gives us great pleasure to recognize our Housekeeping School of the Month. We have two schools that we selected for October of 2025. Ben Martin, the head custodian, is Ms. McCord. And of course, Ms. Warren is the principal. It gives us, again, great pleasure to recognize Ben Martin. Tell you a little bit about their head custodian. Ms. Grandilla McCord has been the head custodian for one year. She has been employed with CCS for thirteen and a half years. She graduated from Oak County High School in 1980. She is the mother of three, two boys and a girl, ages thirty-six, forty-two, and forty-six. You look so young. She has eleven grandchildren and one great-grand. And by the way, her daughter is a talented daughter. If I had time, I'll tell you more about some of the things, arts and crafts. She's really, really talented. She loves cooking, baking, sewing, spending time with God, family, friends, students, and the teachers, all of the staff at Ben Martin Elementary. She gets along well with everyone and I could attest to that. Working at Ben Martin is a pleasure to work with, with all of the staff from the school and also the operations folks that come by on a daily basis. We have a certificate of appreciation for Ben Martin. It's awarded to Ben Martin Elementary School in recognition of Housekeeping School of the Month, October 2025. Mario Cesar Custodial Services Coordinator. Congratulations to you, both. You're doing a great job. All right, New Century Middle, International Middle School. That's my Karen, who is the principal. And the head custodian for the school is currently on FMLA. And the second-in-command, Ms. Faison, is it Faison? Sudie Faison is sitting in for, she is the second-in-command and also doing a great job. But because the head custodian is not here, we just wanted to read a short portion of the head custodian spot, if you would allow me to do that. The head custodian is Ms. Kathleen Wade. She has been the head custodian at the school since October of 2023. She's been employed with CCS since December of 2000, has a total of twenty-six years of service with Cumberland County School. Her greatest accomplishment and award is learning to be a better head custodian. She is receiving and also receiving the Housekeeping School of the Month for April of 2024. Ms. Wade likes to play games on her tablet to keep her mind sharp. She also spends time at the movies and at the beach with her family. We want to recognize you and Ms. Wade for doing an outstanding job. Thank you for your support. You've always supported custodial services and we appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Can we give them a hand? Leads just as the one before New Century Middle. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. Ms. Dawnette Somerville is the supervisor for New Century Middle. And Ms. Cola Highsmith is the supervisor for Ben Martin. Wave at us, Ms. Wade.
I'd like to please have Eastover Elementary School. Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to go back and present to you our Cafeteria of Excellence for the month of September. I had debated whether or not to share this, but I just can't resist. Ms. Patty Casper was unable to be with us last month, so we can honor her school, Eastover Central Elementary, as the Cafeteria of Excellence for the month because she had a trip planned for retirement. I'm very pleased to say that trip turned into a trip to celebrate non-retirement. And we were very excited that she changed her mind and decided to stay with us. Ms. Patty has been with us with Child Nutrition altogether for nineteen years, fourteen years as a manager. I can tell you, I have some managers that have huge hearts and do their jobs completely from their heart. And nobody outshines her when it comes to that. Every one of her principals have always recognized that. And Ms. Patty is so good, we give her two schools to oversee, so she oversees District Seven and Winning. But her principal nominated her, Ms. Thomas, and says, we are very fortunate to have an amazing cafeteria staff who are always willing to help meet the needs of our students and staff. Taking the time to know a student's personality creates a warm and welcoming environment. They work closely with parents to ensure that students with special dietary needs are provided with options that require, they require in our cafeteria. The staff communicates regularly with the front office to keep everyone informed, so our school operations run smoothly. Through their dedication to excellence and commitment to every procedure prescribed, they have earned thirteen consecutive 100 A-plus health sanitation ratings. A true reflection of their hard work and pride in serving our school. No matter the challenge, this team always finds a way to support and uplift our school community. They are more than just staff, they are our family. Our champion family wouldn't be the same without them. And our school's success is possible because of their dedication, care, and teamwork. Let's give a round of applause. And joining her is her principal, Ms. Thomas, and her Child Nutrition Supervisor, Mr. Charles Pears. So we appreciate their support. Thank you, Ms. Patty. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Next, we have November Cafeteria of Excellence. That would be Van Story Elementary School, Ms. Alisa Ballinger. And her assistant principal, Ms. Owen, I believe is here with her. And also joining her is her Child Nutrition Supervisor, Ms. Kelly Brissette. I'm excited to, and very much agree with this one as well, that November Cafeteria of Excellence is Van Story Hills Elementary School. Ms. Alisa Ballinger is the cafeteria manager. She's been in Child Nutrition for fourteen years, serving seven years as a cafeteria manager. She also oversees two schools, Van Story Elementary and Ashley Elementary. And let me tell you, nobody gets away with anything under her oversight. She is very detail-oriented. Van Story Cafeteria staff is shining example of teamwork and efficiency. They've developed a system that allows them to be both highly organized and genuinely engaging. When students arrive, the staff is ready, often greeting them by name and sharing a few friendly words. This personal touch helps students feel seen and valued, creating a warm and welcoming atmosphere. Behind the scenes, the team works like a well-oiled machine. Clear roles in preparing food, serving, and keeping areas clean. Their seamless coordination keeps lunch lines moving smoothly and ensures meals are served quickly and efficiently. The ability to connect with students while maintaining such high standards reflects the team's dedication, pride, and pride in their work. Now, I'll also say it's not, it's even been more challenging for her since she lost her assistant manager at the beginning of the year, who decided to stay in Cumberland County Schools but become a teacher assistant. So she has managed to keep her well-oiled machine going single-handedly. So congratulations and thank you, Alisa. Thank you for your time this morning. I really appreciate it.
Kevin, I'd just like to add that when you said you were employed to these recognitions, I want to say I am employed to these recognitions as well, mainly because it takes all of us. And right now, it does take all of us to bring us into focus to where we need to be. And I just want, I know you guys recognize all these people that work for us and for our students, mainly for our students. But I want to say, give a shout out to it as well as chairman of this committee. They are awesome and I thank you guys. So let's get going. Okay, 105, 1.05, Consider Approval Request for Emergency Response Agreement with the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and the American Red Cross.
Yes. This is our renewal year for the shelter agreement, basically is what this is called. And it's just an agreement with the Cumberland County Emergency Management, Emergency Services Department to designate our schools as emergency shelters in times of declared disaster. And along with that goes a Red Cross agreement because the county manages the shelters for the first seventy-two hours and then the Red Cross comes in and takes over after that. So we have an agreement with both entities.
Okay, and so this is just a curiosity on my part. Do they rotate the schools or is it the same schools in the same area? Because I know Safi was one, Safi Middle was one. Is it the same schools all the time or is it where it's needed?
It's pretty much, the primary shelters are four schools that are the same sites all the time. That's because they're familiar with them. Also becoming, before too much longer, an agreement for emergency generators that the county is going to be installing at the four primary shelters. There are also secondary shelters that are the same. So everybody knows where the shelters are. That way, it's not confusing in times of emergency. People are accustomed to where the shelter is going to be open, so.
And maybe that is in the contract, but I didn't read it anything. They're totally responsible for any of the damages or things that are left at these schools? Because I mean, when we came back, it was awful. And I don't know if they did the cleanup or did they expect our custodians to do the cleanup? Because once it was over with, we came back into awful.
Chaos. If they're, okay, so that's a fine line there. Damage, yes. We do an inspection before the shelter opens. And we also do an inspection together, a joint inspection, after the shelter is closed. Now, we do provide custodial services to support the shelter. So we are in large part, if it's cleaning up, our custodial staff is pretty much responsible. Damages, however, if there was damages done, that is determined that, like say, the Red Cross damages happen, then that determination is made based on circumstances.
I was just mainly bringing that because having gone through some of these things and our custodian staff was like, well, this is unfair. I know this is a time that we all need to be on board. But you know, when it's not theirs, people come to and just do it in any kind of way because they are not the ones that have to clean it up. But then we, the staff, have to come back into that school and they're playing double duty trying to clean up their stuff as well. So I just want to bring that to the forefront.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency response agreement.
Second. Mr. West has made a motion to approve and Ms. Williams has seconded it. Unless vote. Moving right along. Okay. 106, Consider Approval Request to Renew the 2026 Ground Maintenance Service Contract with GF Turf and Landscape for the Westover and Seventy-First Attendance Area.
Yes, ma'am. Just like you said, this is for Seventy-First and Westover. And I'll just remind the board that these were the two areas that were part of the original pilot program that was bid out in November of 2023, with services beginning in January of 2024. So that's when the services of the pilot program began. It runs on a January-to-January cycle, that pilot program. And after that first year, based on their performance and the feedback from our principals, we renewed it through January 2025 at that point. Throughout the program, we saw, of course, a pilot program is where we go in and we monitor very closely to see if we want to move forward with it. We have positive feedback from our principals. We saw a positive improvement in the grounds at the schools. Because of that success, we went ahead and moved forward, bid out the remaining eight attendance areas and on a three-year contract cycle, which is brought to the board. And that began in April of 2025. Since the Seventy-First and Westover areas started earlier under the pilot, they remain on a one-year cycle. So we do those each year. This request is to renew the contract for one more year, beginning in January of 2026. This renewal allows us to maintain quality and continuity across our schools. And while we bring these two areas into alignment with the rest of the district, once this term is concluded, all ten attendance areas will be positioned to move forward and will be under the same bidding schedule from their own. So I am bringing to you for consideration today that we approve for one year those two schools under the same, to assign to the same, to renew the one-year contract just to ensure a smooth transition and a unified district-wide contract cycle.
Questions, comments?
I have a question. Good morning, first of all. So this is just going to be for one year?
Yes, ma'am.
And thus far, you've had no complaints about their services or the quality of their work?
No, ma'am. I actually reached out to our principals before deciding to bring it forward to get feedback from them as well of the schools, just to kind of make sure. And overall, we had good feedback from our principals. And, you know, basically, we had strong support for continuing with these two. They've done well there.
Thank you.
So to verify that, I reached out as well and I concur. We're good.
Thank you.
So I approve.
Make a motion to approve the 2026 Grounds New Over GF Turf and Landscape.
Okay, and this is for the Seventy-First.
Seventy-First and Westover. District.
Just a second. Motion approved by Mr. West. Motion approved by Mr. West and second by Ms. Dr. Doran. Let's vote. Question and answer. Let's see here. We are at 107. Consider Approval Request to Renew the Athletic Fields Maintenance Contract with GF Turf and Landscape.
Again, this is a renewal of the existing Athletic Fields Maintenance Contract. GF Turf and Landscaping has been doing our athletic field maintenance since December of 2022. It's been very successful. They work very closely with student activities and Chad Barber and individually with the coaches at the high schools. And it's been very successful thus far. So we are asking to renew it for another year.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Mr. West to approve, second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. Can I ask a question now, even though it's just a curiosity question? Is this all the athletic fields?
It's all the athletic fields at the comprehensive high schools.
I think you said that. Did you say that?
I don't, I think I might have mentioned high schools, but I'm not sure.
You did. 1.0A, Consider Approval Request to Renew the HVAC Filter Replacement Service Contract with Supreme Filter Service.
If you'll all remember, we started contracting out the filter change service during COVID. And it has been a very, very, very successful contract. They stay right on top of our filters, keeping them changed out on a consistent ninety-day rotation. We were having a hard time keeping up with that. We just didn't have the manpower to keep up with the filter changes. And during COVID, we really, you know, it's really needed to. But it's been very successful. It's good for our equipment. It keeps some breathing good, good for indoor air quality. So we are asking for a fourth-year renewal for this contract. Yes, ma'am. Every single filter in the county.
Yeah, that's a lot of.
We have a big, long, giant list. And I think they change them on, you change them on a monthly basis?
We change them on a nine-day basis.
Every three months?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. West.
This just occurred to me, but I just wanted to ask it. While they're up there, do they clean the grills or vacuum the grills? If there are, I know a lot of these are up in the units and there may not be grills like we see here. But one of my pet peeves is going to restaurants or churches or whatever. And you see the dust up on the grill. So is that part of the contract?
It's not part of this contract. That's actually a custodial responsibility.
Well, and that's all fine, but geez, while they're up there.
They could clean it.
You would seem like that you could move that, maybe this is something for the future, to move that. Because if they had a portable vac while they're up there, that's the time to do it. Not a guy coming behind them and may or may not do it ninety days, every ninety days. So I don't know, I just think that's a thought because visually, it's not attractive.
Especially when it's over the salad bar, Kevin.
That's right.
You know the one I'm talking about, right?
Remind me, someone either. I'll make a motion to approve the HVAC Filter Replacement Services Contract with Supreme Filter Service.
Second. Motion made by Ms. West to approve and second by Ms. Williams. Let's vote. 1.09, Consider Approval of the 2025-2026 Stock Furniture Purchase Through Perfection Equipment Company and Corporate Interiors and Sales.
This is our annual stock furniture purchase, of course. We purchase classroom furniture basically through Perfection Equipment Company and office furniture generally through corporate interiors so that our furniture that we have remains standard. We're using North Carolina Contract Number 5601A. Perfection Equipment Company, it comes in at $211,431.90. Corporate interiors came in at $51,293.94. We'll be using capital funds, so I'm asking for approval to move forward with these purchases.
Donna, could you elaborate a little bit? I know it says furniture, but what type of furniture are we talking about?
So mostly, we're talking about student desks, bookcases, kidney tables, a lot of desks for offices, new desks for offices, chairs, side chairs, things like that.
Questions?
So we ordered them, so are they, this is maybe this, where are they going? Are we ordering them because somebody requested them?
No, ma'am.
Or we ordering them just to have?
These are stock furniture. This will stay in the warehouse until either something is broken and needs to be replaced or a new office comes about and they need an office or we have damaged student desk that they need to replace or they have more students in the classroom than they have desks for. It's the warehouse stock. It's not, they are not slated for any particular school or central service office or anything. It's to keep in the warehouse so that we have it. So when the school does need it, we have a stock to pull from.
Do they know that? Because I know, I went out to some of the schools and their desks are horrible. Like some of the desks are horrible.
So they should know it. During the summertime, that's one of the custodial tasks, are to clean desk and to also assess for any damages. And we get a lot of calls to pick desk up, to exchange desk, things like that. The schools know, the custodians know that that's part of their job.
No, I'm saying the principals, does the principals and the teachers know that they can change our desks?
I would say they should know.
They should know. And we can get something out just as a reminder. If you're in need of replacement furniture, to put an order in and we'll take a look at it. I mean, we can put that out as our reminder that we put out to principals as well.
Let me just add to that.
I know that this is, I'm sorry.
Just coming out of the school system and at the end of the year, there's a checklist and you list what you need, what's broken. Is that what they, the paperwork is there through the bookkeeper? Let me put it to it that way. It is there. Now, whether they know it or avail themselves to it, I don't know. I'm just, I'm playing the devil's advocate here because what I'm saying, having gone through that, you put it out there, they're supposed to list the supplies, the discs, what's broken. In other words, they're supposed to take inventory. Okay, so that's on their part as well. I don't know, I mean, now I have been places where they say, I need a kidney table, I need this. Then you need to put in a request for it. I don't understand when you say it's not there because we're ordering this furniture every year. But I can only speak from experience. We did, at the end of the year, the custodians, the teachers are supposed to take inventory. They're supposed to send it to the bookkeeper and she's, you know, say, well, we need X, this, X, this. Now, whether they do it or not, like I said, I can't vouch for that, but there is a system in place. And so I'm gonna leave that at that, okay?
That's something, I didn't know.
Do we have an inventory that shows what we used this past school year? And are we just each year having a certain amount that we're purchasing? Or do we fill in the inventory that we need to fill in? I'm just wondering how much stockpiling do we do? My other question is, again, and I'll, you know, support the principals in this is. I believe part of our leadership training needs to be facilities and infrastructure and things that are a part of the. Custodial staff responsibilities. Overseas. I think many of our principals, really, that piece is missing. And that's why, again, I said that about the lawn maintenance. I think we need to make sure they know that. But, but my concern is, how do we know how much to replace?
So we have, we have an ongoing inventory of each piece of furniture in the warehouse. And we replace, we have so much that's damaged in a year. Um, and so we have to gauge how much we're gonna need. And furniture usually takes, especially classroom furniture, takes almost a year to come in. So we probably won't get this classroom furniture until the end of the school year next year. Um, and then by that time, we can see how much is damaged and replace it as we need to. But we try to keep a basic number of stock items so that we're prepared to replace when we need to.
And to speak, Miss Warner, for good, to the other, we, we have managerial leadership that we've structured to this point. You have instructional leadership, and we've now structured it to be managerial leadership as well. So those are exactly the type of things that we're scheduling and going out to make sure the managerial piece is covered with our principles.
Thank you. When requests are submitted, oftentimes, and this is, I'm speaking from experience as well. They're told, we don't have it in stock, we don't have a budget for it. So that leads to principals or the custodians not wanting to ask, because they feel like that's what they hear all of the time. So you've got to make sure that they understand that if it is in stock and they have it at that particular time. They can avail themselves to it, you know, they can get it, because they don't, they feel like if they ask for it. They're going to be told, we don't have it, we don't have it in the budget, et cetera, et cetera. So these are things we need to be cognizant of as well.
For the most part, ma'am, just, um, for the most part, there is a standard of furniture. That we provide for different le, age levels, classroom furniture. And a lot of times, if we, they'll, a lot of times, schools will ask for furniture that we just don't standardly. Provide. Um, for example, conference tables. We don't provide conference tables. We might have one in the warehouse here or there. For one that's been picked up for some reason or another, or we also pick up donated items from Fort Bragg. And also from F T C C. So sometimes we have oddball furniture that we don't standardly purchase and keep in stock. Um, oftentimes, uh, out of grade level, for example, a kidney table. I know that, I know teachers love kidney tables because they're good, you know, group learning pieces of furniture. Well, we only provide them for um pre-K through second grade. So if a fourth or fifth grade teacher asks for a kidney table. We tell them we don't have it, because that's not what we standardly supply to that level of classroom. Now, we've put something in place, um, with capital money. That, um, if they do want to order uh kidney tables or special types of kidney tables. In particular, maybe the ones that have the whiteboard right on top, that's become very, very popular now. Then they can go through our uh usual approved vendors and get quotes on those types of pieces of furniture. It'll come to me, I'll take a look at it just to make sure it's safe, quality furniture, and I'll give an approval. And they can, they can purchase that with their school capital money.
Um, I know with the governmental shutdown that there's possibility that you won't be able to use Fort Bragg. Right now, because of their limited budgets, but I have done the same thing, and maybe principals don't know. When I became principal, I partnered with someone through Fort Bragg. I furnished classrooms. Because they have what they call gently-used furniture. They buy brand-new furniture every two years or so. And so I outfitted my classrooms, some of them, all over again with items from Fort Bragg. So we might need to, once this other situation uh somehow comes to a halt or rectifies itself. Try to get a standard connection with Fort Bragg, because they do do that. And I've heard them say, they actually throw things in the garbage that would be like gold to us, okay?
They have a good relationship with our furniture foreman, and they will call him quite often.
Great, great, great.
Can I ask just from uh uh. Standpoint. Why the, the kidney tables? Maybe it's just me. Um, we just only do K through second grade.
That's just, it's our standard.
This is, this is standard.
Yes, ma'am. Most of the time when people want those, they do go here, don, don, don's choose. And when we see them in other classrooms, somebody has provided them. So can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the stock furniture purchase uh agreement.
Mr. West, our motion made, motion to approve, and Ms. Williams second. Let's vote.
Thank you, Linda. One ten, consider approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six universal service agreement. With the Rough Riders Security LLC.
So this is with Rough Riders, and they provide trained, unarmed, uniformed security support for our schools. Um, and this contract, bringing it to you for your approval. Well, uh, basically points out that their hourly rate for services is thirty-two dollars per hour. Unless it's after hours or overtime, it's at forty-five dollars an hour for bringing it to the board. Because we have them in our, they're covering our elementary schools in the, in the city. Um, but this will allow principals to be able for any special, um. Any special program or anything they have that they want to add as security, they could go on and contract with them as well, once we have this in place. So I'll bring this to the board today. I've asked for your approval for the contract with Rough Riders. Uh, security at thirty-two dollars per hour and forty-five dollars for um recognized holidays and overtime.
Your contract says forty-eight dollars.
Forty, uh, forty-eight, excuse me, I'm sorry, must be the type of, it was, sorry, it's in my. Excuse me, thirty-two dollars for standard shifts, forty-eight dollars for overtime and security. Thank you for that, I'm sorry.
And this is in elementary schools, please?
So we have, um, we have, we have seven right now that are currently employed, um, and they're in zones. And they cover five schools each, so they'll rotate from school to school, a security guard. And it's based on geographic where, uh, where they're at. So, you know, basically Zone A would have five, Zone B would have five, and so on. We also have them at um Manchester and Spring Lake Middle. Because they don't have security, they're not in the city, the county's not able to cover them. So we provide them in Spring Lake and those two.
Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve one point ten.
Mr. West?
Well.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, you can do it.
Southern unarmed security guards.
Yes, sir.
Just being straight up, what are they gonna do when a bad guy rolls up? Besides call nine-one-one, which their staff's gonna do?
Correct. They're there as another set of eyes to look at security like we would, I, I mean, basically like a safety schools coordinator. Um, they're there to patrol and to, to be there from, from a safety standpoint, to assist administration in those regards.
It's a lot of dollars per hour. But, I mean, I, I get that point. If their sole mission is to. Keep their eyes looking outward and everybody else is in the building worrying about the children, then it. You can say it that way.
If I could, uh, one of the things that, uh, one of the things that we get from principals, they love them. Because they're interacting with children. A lot of times, you know, with our S R Os are there for North Carolina law. They're there, can help with school rules and stuff with the little ones. And so, you know, they're a, they're a safety partner with children. I know that that doesn't provide, that doesn't speak to the safety that they can provide, but at this point. It's, it's better to have them there and, and utilize them in that regards. So, um, I mean, elementary schools, the feedback we've got, I've never got anything but glowing, like, um, feedback from principals that have them there.
But until something happens, you're getting those glowing comments now. I agree with Mr. West. How much do you know? Do we know how much difference there is between the cost of actual S R Os? And these, this security firm?
So we can't provide S R Os, um, because they're not available.
Well, some, I mean, some, some service where we can get the most bang for our bucks.
S R Os are law enforcement, and they don't have the candidates to provide, so you can only, there's, you gotta go private if you can't get government, um, security guards.
What one?
S R Os.
Um, personally, I know that there's a lot of retired military involved with the Rough Riders. And I also know that some of their duties that they had when they were in the military. Um, their all-eyes and ears make them even more of an asset, because they'll see things that we might not see.
That's right. No, I'm good. I just had to ask a question. It was on my mind, but. And, you know, I've commented for the last decade or two, there's less adults in the building than there ever have been. And so someone there primarily for that purpose.
They have specific training that goes through, and Mr. Young could speak to the specific training that's required, but they are very much military-based.
As Kevin said, um, veteran-owned business, uh, they gotta do the same standards, the same uh background checks as any law enforcement officer through the S B I and F B I.
Okay.
And one thing also, and I understand the difference between law enforcement and private security, but it is a uniform presence. So a lot of times, just the uniform itself is a deterrent for a parent acting out. If they can't tell from a distance, is it law, is it a law enforcement officer or a security guard, a lot of times that will stop them themselves. And they have been beneficial in schools.
You know, when you see a car. You straighten up. Okay, I feel better, thank you.
I thought is, that also checks the box where a lot of the public, you know, would always say, we'll get retired military, get retired military. But you just can't go hire an individual. This is through a company that then has the insurance and all the training that individually, we can't. So it's a way to get engagement from prior military.
To get a presence.
Asset here, so thank you.
Get a presence, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the Rough Rider security agreement.
Uh, Ms. what, Ms. Williams?
Well, she was telling.
I'm renewing it. I'm renewing my motion, one point ten.
Ms. Williams made the motion. Let's vote.
I appreciate it. I don't speak up much. Thank you all for, uh.
For putting up with you, okay.
I'm giving back my hope.
One point eleven, consider other committee concerns. Any other concerns?
We got the cars. Is that, is that this committee?
Uh, yeah.
Can I ask?
What? Can you speak up?
Uh, cars, the.
The eighty cars that she, we got.
So do the, do those cars go home with those people every night, or do, are they parked somewhere? I'm just.
So work trucks, if you are on call, if you're on call twenty-four hours, they take their work truck home. They drive their work truck home, and then they drive it back the next day, if they're on call. For instance, if there's, I'll just give you an example, if there's broken glass at a school. And you have to repair that in the middle of the night, they get called out. So that they don't come back to the office, pick up their truck, and then bring it back out. So if you are on call, they do go home.
All right. And thank, and thank you, by the way, for sending us that information with regards to, um, the transportation of the cars being used. Now, I understand that there are, well, I saw that there are three that go out of this county, right? All right, and you and I spoke briefly about it, and you said that those were grandfathered in? Who grandfathered those particular three cars in?
The board at that time with Mr. Kenlaw, um, he was in auxiliary at that point. I don't know the exact year off the top of my head, I can find that information for you, but it was done through attrition. So when those three leave, nobody else will be allowed. Our new policy going forward is that they were grandfathered in outside of the county.
Okay. Do we need that many cars out on the highway? Um, and do we need for them to take them home with them every single day, to include weekends? I saw several custodial cars, and I'm going, okay, if something happened in the buildings. Would it be that we need that many custodians over the weekend? I know we have eighty-plus schools, we understand that. But would we need custodians? I understand electricians, I understand plumbers, you know, those type of, of individuals. But custodians, what, you know, why would we actually need them over the weekend unless they come in and clean up something? Or, I don't know, we have a natural disaster or something of that effect?
So the only custodial staff that are driving vehicles home are the custodial supervisors and the custodial services coordinator. School custodians do not, do not drive vehicles home. We do have, and, and it's, pardon me, we do have, um, what we call floaters and trainers, there's three of those. Um, they do drive vehicles home, um, because they can, are oftentimes assigned to schools. And have to respond to several different schools, but those are the only custodial staff that, that drive uh vehicles home.
If we have a pipe bust.
Right.
At school and it creates water, and we have from time to time messes happen, when things happen, they respond after hours to that.
I know that when we had situations, our own custodians went out to the schools and clean, well, and cleaned them up. Um, cleaned up the messes, but do we truly, truly, let's think about it, need all of the vehicles that we saw? In that report, out only being kept every single day at home. That's my question. Do we need to have that many?
What it, uh, my, my, um, curiosity is what is the cost for that in the maintenance of all those vehicles? I mean, I mean, I know you got.
And gas.
Uh, well, maintenance gas, um, on that, I mean. I, I would think that would be astronomical, wouldn't it, right?
Well, I appreciate you asking me something. I've been looking to me for it, but as someone who has, you know, eleven vehicles that. When you got busy people, high mileage, the reimbursement rate, you're gonna pay more reimbursing them for their mileage. Because you have to, if they're driving their personal car on company business, school business, you're gonna reimburse them. So there's a point where high-mileage people, both for time of response. Because otherwise, somebody's gonna have to drive wherever that car's parked and go there to then go and respond to the emergency. So I think we're kind of getting into weeds and micromanaging this, that I'm sure it's the best practice across most school systems. That management-level quick responders take their cars home. And in the end, I think financially, it probably ends up making more sense. Jake could probably speak more directly to it, but in general, I'm okay with it, and it's never come up. It's fine to ask it, but I don't think we need to keep micromanaging who's got what car. Well, a list of who's got what vehicle is a little over the top for me, you know, for a board-level decision, but that's just me.
Well, if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, then we're making sure that the money is being spent effectively.
Effectively means that money could go back into.
But I'm just saying, it's six one half dozen the other, you're gonna have to reimburse that mileage anyway, so it, it.
Well, I have a question, because one of the purpose was nutritionists. So do they, do their cars go home every night too?
So the super, supervisors do send.
There was like twelve of them.
Right, so the supervisors in that role, a lot of times what'll happen is if we have an issue at a school where. Um, something breaks and you have to have breakfast, they're there very early in the morning. Um, or, you know, a lot of times their stuff is very early, if something happens uh during that time and it's outside the normal time. So they do drive it home and they do go directly to the schools a lot of times if there's issues. Um, you know, after-school hours, i- it may not be as much in the afternoon, because lunch is done unless there's freezers go down. They re, they report to get that and start uh, 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 unloading freezers into other schools, transporting food to other schools. So there's situations where they do need it outside the hours.
Any other questions?
I'll just add on that point. So you've got a supervisor that lives in Spring Lake, their car's parked here or down at operations. And there's something happened prior to breakfast getting started. They're gonna bring it back from Spring Lake to Gillespie Street, then go back to the school at Pine Forest.
And I, and I get the point, yeah, I get the point.
Supervisors have vehicles, it's a quick response. Otherwise, you're gonna spend all your time commuting and not working.
Yeah, and I get your point, what you're saying.
Yeah, and I get your point, what you're saying, and I totally agree with that, but I think we were talking more about um disasters that happen every day.
Same point. I'm gonna start my work day when I leave the house and I'm gonna come down here and spend an hour getting to work versus going straight to work.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Like I said, I totally agree.
I mean, these are on office-based jobs.
Right. I, I understand your point, but I think the question that the ladies are asking or 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 bringing up is. It's not a disaster every day.
Yes.
And that's what they're saying. If you're, if you, if you're looking at the checks and balances and says that, okay, we got this many, how many, how many disasters do we have a year? You know what I'm saying? Uh incidents where you got to do that.
Alright, so I don't, I hear you. I get it, but it's not about disaster, right? So Mr. West's example, right? You would drive to Spring Lake, you would drive to your work location. Then from the work location, wherever you go, we would need to pay, write a check to the employee, right? So every disaster or not, the supervisors who go throughout the district would be paid the IRS standard mileage reimbursement. From their office location to each and every school that they went to, period. So when you do the analysis, and I'll be honest, I haven't done it in a long time. Uh I got, I did it when we first got here. But it is less expensive to own the vehicles, pay for the gas than it is to reimburse the employees. Driving from their stationary work site to the different schools throughout the day, just in their day-to-day work, disasters or not.
Okay, I believe you, Jake. Settle to me. I believe Jake.
Believe me.
But I mean, it's a, it's a legitimate. So you have to know.
And we might look in the future at reducing some of those vehicles because we still got to purchase those vehicles after so many miles.
Okay, I got this. I got this. We're gonna move on. We've got our answer from the man with the money. Who's responsible, and I think we are all satisfied at this point, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. Um one twelve, we're adjourned.
Let me get my chant up to, to everybody else.
You're on the floor.
I know I am.
Share person high.
Yes. Boy, this looks so much better. Good morning. Call to order, Dolores Bell Chair, Jacqueline Brown, Greg West and Susan Williams. Um one point zero two, consider adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
I second it.
Ms. Williams made the motion and Ms. Brown seconded.
Miss Munch.
Thank you. Now, one point zero three, consider approval of October seventh, twenty twenty-five. Student Services, Student Support Services Committee meeting minutes. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, second.
Jacqueline Brown made the motion and Susan Williams made the, made the second. Okay. One point zero four, receive information regarding the National Guard Split Option Training Program.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Glad to be here this morning with Isaac Rancourt, our military liaison and Sergeant Monday from the National Guard. And they're gonna provide a brief overview of the split option training, which is um an opportunity for our high school age students. That actually Mr. West made us aware of and we were able to um follow up with our National Guard representative. And we actually had this presentation at the Military Child Task Force Meeting a few weeks ago. And wanted to share this information with you all that we'll make sure our students um are aware of.
Good morning, staff. How are y'all?
Good morning.
So I'm Sergeant Monday. I'm the uh team lead for the Fayetteville National Guard recruiting in this area. And this is actually something I really enjoy because I did this when I was in high school. I was a high school junior head and we all know the high school juniors never have any plans or what are we gonna do? And I was sitting there and trying to figure out and I was down in Robson County. I always like to tell people, I was not rich. I did not know how I'd pay for college. And I had a recruiter come in and talk to me about the split off program. Uh the great benefit of it is a high school junior that is seventeen years old can uh enlist into the North Carolina National Guard. So we've already enlisted some this year and one of the benefits is they enlist, they actually start getting their paycheck the following month with the National Guard. Cause with us, the day we enlist, it starts our contract. So high school junior that enlists uh in August, their first two years almost in the military. I, I am horrible with these. So it allows them to enlist, they start getting a paycheck. So if they listed in August, uh the following month, they get their first paycheck for working two uh days with us. One of our big things and we tell the parents, we tell the schools, they will not miss school for the training with us. Um we will not have them come in on a Monday, Tuesday or anything like that. And we tell the kids, if they uh report that, contact us so we can let the kid, uh parent, uh school know. We love them, but they're lying. They're not working. And they're starting to get that growing development. Um they're starting to get leadership opportunities where they're sitting there in a training uh environment. Uh just with us and for Fayetteville, we drill at the uh Armory, right there on uh West Mountain, three oh one area. They do that the entire school year. Upon them uh finishing their junior year, they then go to basic training for nine and a half weeks, ten weeks. Uh so now they're getting leadership opportunities. They're getting the ability to learn, grow, develop on their own. And then they come back for their senior year. So now they have hit the opportunity that they've gotten a little extra money so they can uh start helping out. But it also opens up up to other benefits that people don't look at. One, once they've enlisted, they can now have health insurance as a seventeen-year-old. So for those families that possibly can't do it or are struggling, we, they can go ahead and do it as a seventeen-year-old kid. It's only fifty dollars and some change a month for them to have full Tricare Health Insurance. They're also then open to some of the education benefits. So they can do CLEP exams, they can do different things. Utili- utilizing at a college level while a senior, if for say they weren't able to do it through Cumberland County Schools. They will then do that the entire school year again. Uh and then upon graduating, they go to basic training. Now we teach them that skill, that trade, that opens them up to future developments. Our big push with this is obviously getting these kids an opportunity to go to college. And we can uh pay them to go to college. Um during this time, they're actively working with us. We are in contact with the schools. So before they can enlist, so the young individuals, we've already done, we have to sit down with guidance, we have to sit down with the parents. The parents have to sign off, giving us permission to get a high school letter signed stating that individual will go to basic training. Upon completing this semester, they'll go. Then when we go talk to guidance, before we're even allowing them to enlist, we're looking, are they on track? Cause if they're not on track, we're not gonna give them any extra opportunity because we don't need anything that can deter from us. Upon them enlisting, now we're keeping them and uh recruiters are following up. We're making sure. So individual fails a class, we're involved in that because that can affect them by going to training. When they go to training, they come back, that next school year, we're doing it again with them. Uh with the guidance, making sure they're aware, they understand. And we have had some schools that have went from just the guidance to also principals wanting to be involved and know the information. Um especially with our schools. So it's something that we keep a very open and we provide all the information upfront so the schools know. And then uh this past year, we uh, some of the first ones we've gotten out of the early colleges. We had to really explain to them how the process works, cause we, no one had ever really gone to those schools and asked and tried to enlist. Um so it hope, opened that door to let them see it.
And so, if you have any questions, that kinda concludes the presentation. We're gonna be sharing again this information with all of our principals, all of our counselors and just making sure our students are aware of this opportunity.
That's great.
First time that we've been doing this.
Well, this is the first time I've heard about it. That's why I wanted to bring it forward, but you can talk about, we've had students before that.
So I've been in twenty years. Uh this program has been around for a long time. Bringing it to this level uh for individuals such as yourself to hear it. Um I've been a recruiter in the Cumberland County area for the last five years. Uh we've never had this uh type of audience to speak to. We've uh spoke to guidance counselors, we've done some of the small seminars. But we've never been able to bring it to this level to ensure it gets pushed out.
Well, and I appreciate you coming and it was just a, a fluke that I heard about it. Because uh subcontractor of ours couldn't come some, to a meeting, cause he was going out to celebrate his daughter's. Um he was in Harney County, celebrating his daughter's graduation from um basic training. And I said, well, she's still a junior. And so then that just opened the door. And it's like, they get paid, they get basic training, which is incredible. And I see head nods in rear, rear back there, um basic training. And then so basically after they graduate, the GI Bill is available for them to go to college.
Yes.
And they've got their career, they've got a jumpstart on their career and the Tricare Health Insurance. So I guess shame on us for not knowing more about it in my twentieth some year on the board. But how, how many students in Cumberland County taking advantage of it?
So last uh, so for military, we go from October to September. So for last fiscal year, we had roughly eight high school juniors alone enlisting to the North Carolina National Guard. Now it is open up to the Army Reserves as well, so I can't speak to their numbers, but for us, just that amount. And then this year, I think we've already hit uh three high school juniors.
So, I'm sorry, can I finish this up? So, I mean, that's great for those eight, but that's still relatively low numbers for a system of our size. And it is, this female in Harney County was an Army uh Reserve. So we've got two branches that can get the word out and into our schools. So my next question is, how can we accelerate their integration into our schools and get this word out sooner? So that's my question. I'll hush.
So one thing we've seen in other counties um and other school districts is they uh, schools do the, the seminars. Bring in the high school juniors, seniors and give the opportunity to let the branch, so the military, sometimes we do military weeks. Uh but have those military affiliated where invite the recruiters out to speak to different benefits. Uh because we have to tailor what we talk about. If we're in just seniors, we're not telling them about this program. And then when they find out about it, they're like, ah man, I wish I would've done this last year. So uh those open invitations, uh if a principal wants a recruiter to come out. One, if any of my recruiters in Cumberland County, the principal doesn't know how to contact them, that's a problem. Because they should, uh one of our main focuses is high school students. Um so if the school does not know how to reach a recruiter, that's the first issue. Uh but then next one is just scheduling that time where as a high school, they can have that seminar of all the juniors. They come in and we can take a five, ten minute, explain it, show them all the jobs that are available and what they're able to do.
And, and Mr. West, thank you again for bringing this to our attention so that we can do exactly what you're saying. And so we made the first steps again in sharing this, having this, his team come and present at the uh Military Child Task Force. Our next steps in working with our military liaisons, making sure principals are aware of this information. My recommendation is gonna be that um during a junior class meeting, that um they allow that, that these folks to come in and share this information. Information, making sure our counselors have access. So that's where we are now and making sure that we push this forward, cause it, it is a great opportunity.
You got some guests?
Yes, so I have Sergeant Matute uh back here. She covers uh Grace Creek and uh Southview High School. And then I have Sergeant Brett back here. She covers uh Pine uh Forest and she covers Westover High School. They're very implemental into this.
Thank you. First, I wanna say um thank all of you for your service, for everything that you do. And that's basically it.
Okay, I'd like to say thank you as well um for your service. And this is awesome. I just wish we had knowledge of it some time ago. Or at least those of us who had, well, not me at the time, but those who were on board then, on the board then had knowledge of it. Because we have to face the facts that not all of our children are going to go straight into four-year colleges, you know? So we appreciate the efforts that this program is bringing forth to us. But I'd like to say that we also may need to get in our counselor's hand, strong training. And all of the information like everyone else is saying here, so that everyone is aware of what's out there. Because it is an extremely beneficial program. Now, you said Pine Forest and what was the other high school?
Uh Westover, Southview.
Just don't forget E E Smith High School.
Oh no ma'am. So I just brought two with me. I figured if I brought all my recruiters in.
Alright, just don't forget E E Smith High School.
Intimidate y'all a little bit. Uh I bring too many bodies with me. Uh but no, we have coverage, every single high school in Cumberland County has. At least one recruiter assigned to those schools.
For future reference, we don't intimidate easily.
And Dr. Hills, I can assure. Make sure E Smith was represented. This presentation was given at E E Smith High School during that Military Child Task Force.
Awesome. Thank you.
I too would like to congratulate you. Thank you. But also, having been involved with the ROTC programs in our schools and actually being the female chaperone one time at Douglas Bird. What I believe too is that ROTC student that gets involved, many of them I think aren't aware of this program. Because right now, unless it's changed, Cumberland County's schools have probably the largest recruitment for military service. And they also have the largest number of students that go to military academies. And that's, of course, I'm sure it's influenced by Fort Bragg, but I do believe some of those kids are gonna be heading toward military service anyway. What a great opportunity. So I strongly encourage it and I think our ROTC instructors, uh that's another one. I know they buy in already, but this would be a good selling point for them to get those juniors more active, I believe.
I would like to say most of them would know. Um we, ROTC is one of the very easiest ones for us to get into. And uh open that door, whether it's the Navy, whether it's Air Force, whether it's Army Branch, uh ROTC, they're very open to us coming in. Um in those, I hate saying it, those are the easy ones that we can always get into. But it's that kid that's in English honors, in any other subject, that they don't know the other opportunities that are out there. And how we can help. Cause one of our big benefits for the North Carolina National Guard is we have the federal funding of four thousand a year. Uh going to, to college through uh Department of Defense. But because we work for a state, we also get an additional thirty-six hundred plus a year or a semester to any uh college. That is in North Carolina that's public. So for us, we get an in- additional income of money because we're a state response as well. So again, those kids that, as you said, sometimes they wanna go to college and I was that individual. I wanted to go to college, but like, I can't afford it. I did not want student loans. The National Guard opens the opportunity to eliminate it. And a lot of times when we're talking to kids, and I always ask them the most important thing, you wanna go to college, are you getting paid to go? And I've never had a kid raise their hand and say that, but I tell them all the time, for the Department of Defense, if you go to college, you're a full-time student. We give you an extra four hundred ninety-three dollars a month just to be a full-time student.
Are we gonna push this out on social media? Can we do an electronic call to juniors to make sure parents are aware of all these opportunities?
Yes, yes.
Y'all go get busy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job.
One point zero five, receive information regarding the North Carolina College Connection Program.
I was just to Dr. Bracy's point, we have a student services Instagram that does scholarships, financial aid, everything. So I will get this information and get it pushed out to the students as well.
Thank you.
Alright, and so more great news that we can share with students about the NC College Connect Program that Ms. Newitz is gonna share.
So for those students that are also. So for those students that are also looking to go two or four-year, the state of North, good morning, by the way. The state of North Carolina started this program last year, but there was only about six of the public universities and none of the independent colleges at the time. So they have increased it. NCDPI increased it this year. And so I'm here to talk about some of the opportunities that our seniors got today or got this year through NC College Connect. So what is it? The NC College Connect Program is a program that offers our North Carolina public high school students that have a GPA weighted of two point eight and above and also meet College Connect requirements. The opportunity to have direct admission to select colleges and universities that chose to participate in this program. The colleges and universities participating voluntarily agreed to be a part of it. So any school you're not seeing is become, and you'll see the list on the next slide, is because they have not chosen to be a part of it yet. Moving forward, the hope is though that additional colleges and universities will will take part in it. And the link below, you all can click on, it takes you directly to more information around the program, their direct website. So these are the schools that participated. You can see there's a nice variety of UNC system schools along with about thirty or so of the independent colleges or universities, many of which our students are interested in applying to. And then each PSU has the opportunity to also utilize the community college that's in their area, so Fayetteville Tech. So the students that have the two point eight, have the ability to earn direct admissions to one, to several of these schools. They not, they were not necessarily eligible for all of the schools. But they were eligible for at least one of the schools if they met the requirements. So when we look at our CCS students, we had one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight eligible seniors. And a hundred percent of our eligibles, of our students that were eligible, were eligible for the program. And you can see this breakdown of the schools and how many students they had per class that were eligible to accept or to take part of the, this direct admissions, this North Carolina College Connect Program. And they got their letters anywhere between August and October. And we utilized, I'll show you this next, how the school counselors tried to support this, is we made sure from the time the original, the first letters went out through then the second wave of letters that went out in October, we made sure that our eligible students knew. So the state shared the information with our Data and Accountability Office, so Kim Nash. And they then got it with, to me. I got it to our high school counselors. And then from there, and our building principals. And then from there, they've been having conversations with the students to make sure they know how to claim their spot, apply. It's also a shortened application. They answer five questions. They don't need college, they don't need academic recommendations or anything like that. They just had to answer five questions. And then College Application Week was during October twentieth through the twenty-seventh. So many of the schools, actually all of the schools, had sessions for the kids to come either down to the Media Center or come to the counseling office to, to work on their applications. And they made sure that the students that were eligible for this program knew that they were eligible and how to take advantage of it. And we are going to continue to provide advisement and support through the deadline of January second. So we are just excited to have this opportunity for our kids. I have reached out to the state. Right now, we don't have any direct reports from data reports from the states because I want to know, okay, of our nineteen, almost two thousand students, how many of them actually took advantage of this? What schools are we in Cumberland County, are we taking more advantage of? Are they wanting to apply for that kind of thing? So I'm hoping we get some of those reports from the state back. Yeah, yes. No, that was my first question. I've reached out. I just haven't heard anything back yet. But my hope is that the state will push something out to us so we can actually track now that we've had a full, a new year and a bigger program.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
All right. One point zero six, consider approval of the proposal to discontinue the Uniform Dress Code at WHO elementary school beginning twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. This is a consider item to discontinue the Uniform Dress Code survey at, or at William H. Owen. And so just to kind of give you some context, currently for this school year, I've listed the schools that currently have a uniform dress code here in our district by elementary, middle, and high. And so you can see that William H. Owen is on that list. And this is a request to look at whether they continue with that beginning of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So that wouldn't affect where we are this school year. And so there is a regulation forty-three sixteen R two, which is attached, which outlines the process for school to either implement a school uniform dress code or to discontinue a uniform dress code. And it basically has four components. It begins with the school improvement team requesting to move forward with the proposal, that there's some conversations at the school level. So it's got to be initiated at the school level with the school improvement team. And then they notify my office and I talk through, make sure we have all the documentation, that there has been conversation, and there is a request to survey and determine if this is something that the school community wants to move forward. From there, I reach out to the Data and Accountability Office to get a survey developed. Because the requirement is that the school must survey parent stakeholders, student stakeholders, staff stakeholders. And then based upon the results of that survey, I mean, there's at least a seventy percent approval of whatever that proposal is to implement or discontinue. Then I take it to the cabinet where we have another conversation about whether to move it forward to this committee for approval, which brings us here today. And so what we'll share, so the next slide is again, kind of outlines everything that I just shared, but in a narrative format that was shared with Ms. Andress. So she was really clear on the whole process and what needed to be done to move this forward today. So the survey was generated and you can see here, our Data and Accountability Office had to first of all, calculate how many potential participants would be, should be included in the survey. So you can see the total enrollment for William H. Owen is four hundred and two students, but for the purpose of the survey, only third, fourth, and fifth graders are surveyed. And then you can see that, so that was a total of one hundred and eighty-five students. There's sixty-two staff at William H. Owen and a total of four hundred and two parents. And that is the total parents that are in that building. So there was a potential for six hundred and forty-nine survey responses. So the survey was administered and Ms. Andress can talk about the weeks that the survey ran. And from that survey, there were three hundred and forty-one responses. Of those responses, one hundred and ninety-five were not in support of the proposal to discontinue uniforms. I'm sorry, one hundred and forty-six or forty-two percent were not in agreement with moving forward with discontinuing uniforms. And a hundred and ninety-five participants, which was fifty-seven point two percent of the survey respondents, were not, were, were in agreement with the proposal to discontinue the uniform requirement. Okay, so as a part of the regulation, there is a, a piece that talks about what happens with non-responses to the survey. So there were three hundred and eight people who did not respond to the survey in one way or another. So the regulation that is in place states that non-responses are added back in, in favor of the proposal. And so we wanted to make sure that parents and people that took the survey were real clear that that's a part of the regulation. And so in the communication that went out to, when the survey went out, we made sure that, Ms. Andress made sure that the messaging emphasized that if you don't respond to the survey, then those responses are considered or counted back in as being in favor of the proposed, of the proposal in the survey. So that brings us to this slide, which when you add in the non-responses, you see that it is a total of seventy-seven point five percent of respondents or those that didn't respond and their responses were added back in in favor, in agreement with not continuing with uniforms at William H. Owen for the twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. All right. So I know that was a lot of numbers and information. I tried to bring it, connect it back to the regulation. And so we're ready for questions.
Nick, you know this, that I had an issue with this a couple of years ago when it came to the regulation. Now, when you talk about the seventy percent, where is that coming from? Is that state statute? What is it?
My recollection, Chairwoman Jones, is that that was just kind of a consensus number reached some time ago. I don't have the whole history of this uniform conversation right locked away here. But it's to your immediate question, there's nothing in state statute or anything that requires that percentage. Yes, ma'am.
And the next question is, do you know the reasons for the forty-two percent that disagreed?
My perception is we are a Spanish immersion school program as well that is within our school building. And so being that we do have that choice program, that prestigious program, and within our building, more than likely, the forty-two percent came from those parents that are enrolled into that choice program.
Demographics of your school and economic status of your school. Those are two things that I think are important in that uniforms tend to be more economical for parents because you can, actually, uniform companies sometimes will provide you three outfits. And you can, by Friday or Thursday, you can rotate them around. And then the other thing is, this day and time with our dress codes being such an issue, especially kids knowing how to dress, the discipline issues that come up from dress code violations. I find that in elementary school, if you can make everybody on the same track, so that what happens is you come to school and you're all have the same benefits. You don't have to worry about somebody being able to afford, you know, a coach handbag if somebody can't afford to bring a handbag. And that's what I, I think too, is the diversity that we have in our county, the poverty we have in our county. Personally, I support uniforms. And I just believe that that number that didn't answer the survey, I think if you went back and reminded them, because what I have found with surveys is we never get a good results, but we get a good results when we change something. Because then all of a sudden, their voice wasn't heard. That's just my opinion.
And Ms. Warner, to your point, I just want to, to state that I'm, whatever happens today, of course, I will enforce at the school level. The reason this all came about in twenty twenty-four at the September School Improvement Team meeting was because of the accountability and the enforcement or lack thereof. And so the conversations that I'm having with the parents are, you know, when I'm making those phone calls, your child's not in school uniform today. Or a teacher's making that phone call in their instructional time, they're stating, oh, it's in the laundry. I don't, I wasn't able to put my child in there. And so moving forward with a uniformed school, if there's consequences for the non-compliance, we're losing instructional time. Because throughout that day, we're, we're calling or we're sending them to the school social worker to get or obtain a school uniform. Additionally, we have, you know, conducted drives to get school uniforms. And that's just something that's very difficult in our county. We are in the Douglas Bird School District. And so I agree with your comment that we, we do have to remember that we want to be equitable and inclusive of our scholars. But as a school principal with a code of conduct stating that not in school uniform is a level one consequence, how do I keep a child in their seat because they're not complying to the school uniform? And then furthermore, you know, when these parents are sending students to school in a school uniform and they're seeing other kids being dropped off not in a school uniform and there's no consequence behind it, how, how, how do you suggest that we continue to move forward with those types of issues?
I can help you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because Montclair Elementary School was where we started the uniform policy. And what we did there was we made sure that that was one of the check-offs before school started, that everybody had uniform. If they didn't, we had a clothes closet. We also had ways of making sure that we, that before they came to school, they had their uniform package. But I just, I, I'm concerned that what will happen is you'll find that then you've got to enforce the crop tops, the two short skirts, or you got to enforce the fact that we're going to fight over because I've got Nikes and they got Bobos. And so that's the reason that we also saw improvements in scholarship because now we're on an equal playing field. But that's just my thought. Like I said, I, I empathize and sympathize with the parents because I also know that you can now go just about anywhere and get uniforms for a very reduced price. And that's where I think we can help them more by letting them come to school equally dressed. But I understand, I just, that's my personal opinion that Douglas Bird District is poor. And we have poor, in, poor parent involvement too. So that's why oftentimes you got to go to the door to get the answer to the survey. You can't just send a survey home.
And so Dr. Chalmers just pointed out, the survey communication was shared between October sixth and October seventeenth. October fifth, twelfth, and sixteenth, it was shared through a phone call via, via Parent Link. It was also shared on Class Doja, October fifth, sixth, twelfth, and sixteenth. And it was on our school webpage between the, the dates of October sixth and October seventh. And then it was shared with teachers to share with their scholars, but on the date of October sixth. This statement was made very clear that in alignment with the CCS Board Regulation, the non-responses to the survey shall be counted in votes in favor. So that was very clear in each of those communications. So I just wanted to share that with the board as well.
Any more questions? Which will you think will be the bigger fight, enforcing uniforms or enforcing, you know, the crop tops and, you know, the dress code?
Sure. That's a great question. So historically here in Cumberland County, I've served in all school uniform schools. Massey Hill Classical High School, including William H. Owen. My children do not attend classical schools. And so I'm trying to keep them in compliance with the dress code. I, I do personally believe that we would be able to adhere to a, a school uniform that the school improvement team would vote upon. And we would create aligned with the Cumberland County code expectations, not uniform, but the. We, we would, moving forward from this board meeting, whichever way it goes, we would reiterate the expectations of a school uniform and, and put some things in place. Or we would start creating a dress code policy for the next school year. But I do believe that it would be easy to enforce. Really, right now, we still do address, believe it or not, some school uniform concerns such as lengths of skirts and things of that nature. So that does happen at times.
And, you know, I, I, and I keep saying this now because our clientele has changed.
Yes.
And so we have to, we have to dictate to the customers that we have. We have to understand that the customers we have and whether they're going to adhere to what we put out there, whether it is a uniform or whether it is proper dress. So I think it's a fight either way. It's, it's not going to be an easy task either way, if you go this way or that way. It's going to be some issues in my, I guess my thing is, I'm like everybody else is, you know, like you say, it's whatever we decide, you know, whatever. But there, there's still, it's, it's not going to be resolved either way. You know, just because you say, oh, we don't have the uniform, then the, there are other problems going to arise as well. And, and it's, and it's easier, probably a little bit more easier in elementary than if you were in middle school or high school. Okay, so. Any more questions?
So Ms. Bell, this is a consider item.
I know, I know. This is a hard one.
I move to approve.
I second it. Give them what they want.
Okay. Ms. Williams made the motion and Ms. Brown second. Let's vote.
Long as you know the consequences.
Thank you.
One point zero seven, consider approval of professional service agreement with AIA Healthcare, NC, and Emerges LLC to provide services for EC students.
So Mr. McMillan is going to join me today to share these items. Go ahead.
Welcome, welcome.
So we have two contracts that I want to bring before the board this morning. The first one is AIA. So it provides staff of implementation of direct and related services with regards to occupational therapists, additional contractors to support the district needs. Services provided to multiple schools over the entire district as required based on students' need. Um, services provided to multiple schools over the entire district as required based on student's need according to their IEPs, obviously. So we're looking at um a renewal uh for a year. Services are calculated hourly per week. Um, um, uh, the provider, the rates vary um by provider and their level of experience. So this one is not to exceed ninety thousand, and the source of funding would be uh accessible children's instructional funds. I was gonna say it's tied to our strategic uh goal, uh which is one B, define and understand and promote educational fairness and ensuring opportunity and access for all students.
Moving to Emerges.
Yes. So Emerges is a little different. Um, it provides students with related services, behavioral supports based on needs to include speech. We know that's a big Achilles' heel in our uh school district with regards to related services. Behavioral support, BCBA's, those are board certified behavioral analysts. Um, so their role pretty much is to come up with the behavioral plans, and the RBTs are the ones that actually carry out the behavioral plans. So those are, RBTs are registered behavior technician. Um, services are provided to multiple schools over the entire district as required um based on student's need according to the IEPs. We're looking at a contract renewal one year. Services are calculated hourly per week um for the provider. Rates vary by provider um and their and their level of ex- experience as well as discipline. So this one is uh not to exceed eight hundred and six thousand. And of course, the source of funding for this one would be uh accessible children's instructional funds.
And this again goes back to the conversation we had at the work session around the staffing pieces that we're having to go to outside contractors to get the staff that we need. And this particular um agreement also uh provides that behavior support, which we did not have before, so that, so those BCBA's, those RBTs, that is new for us in the district. And so just wanted to emphasize that that additional funding is to provide those services that parents are requesting that we provide. And so now we're able to do that through this contract. No, I'm sorry.
Something I wanna add to that is that um we all know, because we have a lot of educators in here, that if we don't uh address the behaviors in the classroom, it's gonna be hard to get that five percent, that increased student academic achievement with regards to students with disabilities. So our um behavioral support is needed in that area um to help principals achieve that five percent as well.
Any questions? Um, when we talked yesterday, I would just want them to know that the contract last year, I believe it was a hundred and.
Right.
Hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
We didn't have the behavior piece, right? So I think we were using the company, but um for maybe speech or other contractors. But now when we added the behavior support, that's what has increased the contract to where it is now.
Are you talking about the Emerges one? So last year, it was, the contract was only from January to May, so that was only eighty-five thousand. So, yeah, so now you have it for the whole year. So that's where you see the increase at.
I was getting ready to ask, because I thought y'all run this just before, but I couldn't, I couldn't find it. So I was like, where, how much was it?
This will be the full year implementation. So we have ten staff members that that we have on this contract.
Okay, that's what, okay, ten, okay.
That's awesome. Including speech, OT.
Uh, so that would be, no, no.
Which company has ten?
So the behavior support persons are Emerges.
Emerges, and the other one has how many?
Uh, that one has one OT.
Because it doesn't exceed ninety. That's the one that doesn't exceed ninety.
So for, excuse me.
Yes.
So for the ninety thousand, we only get one staff person? Is that what you're saying?
So we only have, we only have one occupational therapist at the time that's that's presently um contracted out. But if we need more uh services, then then they'll provide more services as well.
So that ninety thousand will be inclusive of additional services if we need them?
Any more questions?
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Brown made the motion, and Ms. Su- Ms. Ms. Williams seconded it. Yeah, Ms. Susan. Let's vote. Uh, don't leave yet.
I told them they didn't vote yet.
We, we got to go to one point zero nine, so we don't want you to leave yet. All right, we'll go to one point zero eight. Consider approval of twenty-five, twenty-six school improvement plans. Now, just take a seat, just take a seat, don't leave.
Good morning. I'm sorry.
Good morning, Jay.
Dr. Fields, go ahead.
Um, so we had some discussion last week during our work session around our school improvement plans, and I wanted to um bring a, just a few things back up um for a public reminder. That way, he doesn't follow instructions very well, does he, Ms. Bell?
He sure don't.
Um, I wanted to let you know that the general stat, remind everyone that the general statute requires that all school school improvement plans be brought to the board, our local boards, every two years. We did that last year for all plans, and every year it is required that low-performing school plans be brought. Um, North Carolina statute requires that, and so that's what um we are bringing today. They require the low-performing plans to be um submitted for approval every year and then uploaded into Endastar because we have the um North Carolina Department of Public Instruction coaches that also provide feedback and coaching on the plans each year. Um, the timeline, um even though we knew back um in early September who the low-performing um schools were, they were not officially designated by the State Board of Education until October second. So um legally, that's when the timeline um begins, when the official designation is granted. Um, statute requires that within thirty days of that official designation, we must share plans with the local Board of Education for their review and consideration for approval, which must be done by December first. In addition, we have to send um parent notification letters um home for the low-performing schools, and that um was completed and done by the deadline of November first. Um, and then the submissions of the plans to um NCDPI through the Endastar platform um must be done by the deadline of December sixth. So I wanted to now bring it to any questions you might have for Bell or DeRae.
Any questions?
Everything seems separate, is that right? Yeah, I mean, it seemed like we're on track.
Yes.
We're good?
Good.
This is a consider item.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school improvement plans.
I second it.
Um, Mr. West made the motion, and Ms. Brown seconded it. Let's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. One point zero nine, consider other committee concerns. Are there any other concerns? Shoot. Okay, I got one or two. He's sitting over there.
Oh, well, he needs to come back up.
Come back. You know, we took a beating last month for um EC, and I wanna know, um, how's our testing coming along? Because I think that was one of their main concerns, that there's their um kids weren't being tested. So what, so how are we doing with this?
We're doing well on the indicator eleven, so it is increased to, unfortunately, right, but it's around forty-two, forty-three percent. So that's, it's progressive with regards to the testing of students with disabilities. So we we are having some gains with regards to that.
Okay, what was it last year?
Um. In the twenties.
Okay, okay, so we about doubled.
Yes.
Okay.
So that is on our, something that's on our radar, and we're working with the people from DPI to help to increase that as well. So they come down, they meet with us, and we have conversations about how we can uh better uh get the testing process to where it needs to be.
Okay, and how many, I know we're short EC teachers. Do you know how many?
I don't know the exact.
The last vacancy count that that before we were at like twenty-two EC teachers short in District Y.
Okay, so we haven't made any, any gains?
Well, we gained and then we dropped, so it's it's kinda like, yeah, it's like one step forward, one step back throughout the course of the year.
Is that after they get the bonus? I just teased it.
But we, we do pay a bonus throughout the course of the year.
Okay, one more question. Oh, you got one? Go ahead. Um, case managers, how are we with that?
With regards to?
Um, see, I don't know how it works. Um, do you have a certain, certain amount in each district?
Right.
Okay.
They have districts.
So.
We do have some shortages, and so our um specialists that's on site with us, um, they're actually fulfilling those areas as well. They have principals out, because principals don't have, uh, some principals don't have case uh um managers. So we're actually stepping in, and I'll boost on the ground and we're helping out.
Ooh, I feel so good. I'm so proud of you. At the EC department? Yes.
Um, I just, um, so you said we have forty-seven percent. So what are we doing to try to get those numbers up? Like, are we, are we doing, you know, because I know like on corporate sometime, they do like a a day. You know, like each school do a day, and then they just, they run those IEPs all day. They do whatever they need to to get that in their compliance. So are we doing anything in that nature to get us in compliance? Because, am I correct, we're not in compliance?
That's a great question. Um, so it's hard to do it during the day because there's so much going on within our department during during the day. But what we have done is during the summer, we've hired extra help, and we run meetings all summer long. So that's how we got caught up, you know, with a lot of that. So we utilize the summers to make sure that we are having those IEP meetings.
So throughout the school year, we're not doing, we just keep.
I know that Dr. Richard is exploring some Saturday options, so we're exploring all of those things and utilizing any available man- after-hours that we can to try to um meet the needs and catch up. Because obviously, we want a hundred percent, right? That's always the goal.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, so there are, and we can bring maybe a full report, that way it captures everything. But I'm think, like, we have hired educational diagnosticians, that's a new position in the district, and we've got some of those folks coming on board, with two starting this week, who can go in and help us with testing. Because again, we're short psychologists, right? So all of that has an impact when we have the staffing shortages, but we're trying to be creative. So by taking um some of our vacant psychologist positions, created educational diagnostician's positions that some retired teachers can go fill and help us um do some of the pieces that we can't do by not having psychologists. But I think that what we can do is pull together kind of a comprehensive uh report about all the things that we're doing to address indicator eleven, which is that not ma- making sure we're meeting the ninety-day timeline. But uh, but there are a lot of pieces that have been input in place. Uh, we're always open to any suggestions and feedback that's gonna help us get better.
Once IEPs are created, what follow-up? And I know that we have your team, we have your teams in the schools and the principal administrators, okay? What follow-up is done to ensure that the IEPs are being, the goals of the IEPs are being met?
So that's, that's when we have uh our annual reviews to make sure that um whatever is on the IEP has been fully implemented. And um also, the case teachers at the school make sure that they follow up uh with that as well. So they kind of manage that, that specific piece as well.
Did you say case teachers?
Case teachers, yes.
That's different from case managers?
Well, same, same difference.
So if there is no case managers who's filling in?
Say it again.
If there is no case managers?
So that's when our folk, our, our, our.
Your team come in and rectify the problem?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna say this because I know we need to take a break, okay? But I wanna know this because I did get some concerns. I know you want, don't wanna hear this, I don't wanna hear. IE block, how is that working with EC?
So that's.
Because a lot of parents are not.
Yeah, and that's a loaded question, because that's only as good as the school administrators are implementing it in their school, uh, having been a former administrator. And I understand that the master schedule, that's, that's your baby, right? So, um, that was interesting the way that that was rolled out. But now, if they're doing it with fidelity, that would be a conversation that um I've kinda had when we had the data meetings. But it's kinda difficult to kinda have those conversations, just being transparent because when you have your area superintendent sitting right beside you, and then we're talking about students with disabilities, how we can increase student academic achievement, my conversation is gonna be about the IE block and how is that doing, right? But that's hard, if you're not implementing that with fidelity, then you have your area superintendent right here. So that's, that was kinda, you know, my way of kinda um doing a pulse check to see how that was going. But I understand that principals are sensitive right now with regards to data.
Right.
And so maybe there was, there needs to be a better way to kinda manage to check up on it. It's giving you a transparent answer.
Yeah, and that's, and and and.
Some administrators are doing it, and some.
Some are not.
And some are not doing it.
Yeah, and that's, that's the feedback and the things that I'm getting, um, you know, not knowing how to dev into all of that. All I know is the co- the the complaints, I don't wanna say complex, concerns that are coming to me um about this with their child. You know what I'm saying?
Well, what I will add is that we have formative assessment data that is coming in from the different assessments that have been administered. And so now we're able to really look at student by student and see which students are performing, which students aren't performing. And that's the conversation that now we need to have is, um, not a general question, but specifically, how are we utilizing the IE block for this particular student to address these particular standards? So now, I think, now that we have some data, we can have some more pointed conversations, especially around our students with disabilities, and how the IE block can be used to address the deficits that we now have in the data that's coming in from our formative assessments.
The bottom line is, it has to be implemented, correct?
With fidelity.
And that's, and that's all I'm saying.
And we have to go in and monitor and support, and that's what, and that, so that is where we are.
Okay, but it gotta be implemented.
Yes, um, I also wanna say, when it comes to follow-up on the IEP and the goals, you gotta involve the parent too, so they need to follow up also. So it's not just the teachers and the case managers. So the parents need to be involved to make sure that it's being done also.
Yes, ma'am.
Your area superintendents, how involved are they in what you're doing at those, during those particular times that you're having these conversations? Or is everybody, do they understand?
So I love the thought process on that, and I think that's another dot with regards to that supportive measure to ensure that the IE blocks with regards to students with disabilities is being adhered to. So a lot of times, it's not necessarily maybe uh Ayana or myself going to principals, but that could be a person that would best, you know what I'm saying, say, how is the IE block going, right? Because, because that is the area superintendent. So I think that's a collaborative effort and approach.
And can I just add that, that we have, we have, with Dr. Leathers, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Fields, myself coming in, we have really have collaborative meetings once a week where we're sitting down with the area superintendents, our EC folks, um, our academics folks, we are collaborating in a way that we have not done so before. And so we're, so we were able to have the conversation like um Ms. um Brown has shared with me a particular school and a concern about IE blocks. Now I can go sit down with that team and let's, let's talk about what's happening at that school and try to address that collaboratively. We are doing that once a week.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. When you talk about testing and stuff like that, um, so are we just out of compliance for testing? Or are we out of compliance for annual reviews?
So not, not meeting that ninety-day timeline.
Just not meeting that ninety-day timeline. Is there any way I can have, like, we can have, if, I know you said that you're gonna do a comprehensive thing, so that we can see like the annual reviews, how many we out of compliance, tri annuals, how many we out of compliance? And if we have any new initial uh IEPs, can we also have a, a graph to see?
Do you want a report?
A report to see what's, yeah, to see what we're doing. Yes. I, I appreciate that. And um thank y'all too for that, being candid with us and things like that. So we appreciate it so much, yes.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of y'all.
She's so proud of her committee.
You sure?
One point ten. We are through. Yes. And thank you, Mr. McMillan.
We're taking a break. Cake.
Yeah.
Cake.
You need to stand up.
Stand up. You got this.
You know, the last time I've had this, probably in two years. Hey, we ready? Who is going missing?
We're moving on to policy.
Is she?
She's talking.
She's talking. Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to call to end order, Policy Committee. Dr. Mary Hales Chair, Jaclyn Brown, Judy Musgrave, and Greg West are members. Mrs. Musgrave is not in attendance. I entertain a motion for 1.02 to adopt the agenda.
I make the motion.
Okay, the motion has been made by Ms. Brown and seconded by Mr. West. 1.03, consider. Oh, excuse me. Thank you, thank you, Mr. West. You know how I like to move. Okay, 1 point. Thank you. 1.03, consider approval of October 7th, 2025 Policy Committee Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second it.
Okay, Mr. West made the motion, seconded by Ms. Brown. Let's vote. Thank you. 1.04, receive essential 9,000-series board policies, facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Hales. As she said, these are the 9,000-series policies that all address facilities in one way or another. And as usual, I'm just gonna run through in this section, those policies I think are essential for you all as board members to be aware of. And at any time, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to stop me. The first one that I have is policy 9,000 itself, which describes planning to address facility needs. And in the first section, it sets out the basic principles that the board adheres to when it undertakes construction or renovation of facilities. We want to have the highest quality environment possible for our students. Obviously, we want to meet all safety requirements and all other legal requirements regarding access individuals with disabilities. And number four, ensure that the principle of form fits function guides the design, construction, and renovation of facilities. The rest of the policy then goes into the, described the planning process. And I think that this board can feel very satisfied that, you know, having engaged with MGT and having gone through this system-wide facility review and now following up with their latest work, that you all are being good stewards and being proactive and really getting your hands around your facility needs and looking with a long-range perspective, not just reactive. The next policy that I flagged here is policy 9020, Facility Design. And that sets out, again, sort of the guiding principles of any kind of facility design for school buildings or other facilities in the system. It references the need for state board review of those designs and to make sure that they're in compliance with the general statutes. The next policy that I flagged for you all is 9110, which is use and selection of architects, engineers, surveyors, and construction managers at risk. The first three categories, I kind of lumped together and I refer to a lot of times as design professionals. They're the people with the licenses and the provincials and the dollars to design, renovation, and new construction. Construction manager at risk is kind of a hybrid model where you would engage with a company that would provide both design and the actual construction itself. But the real reason I wanted to flag this for you all today is it's an interesting feature of not only North Carolina law, but federal law, that when you go about as a board to select a design professional, an architect, an engineer, by law, you're not allowed to do it just based on who has the lowest price. You're supposed to consider qualified firms and then you, as a board, select whoever you want. And the idea is, you know, the expertise is what's really important. You're not focused solely on price. So I just mentioned that. I mean, that's, it's, again, you see the references to the North Carolina general statutes. That's a, that is a legal requirement. Now, by contrast, if we go to the next policy that I've flagged here, 9120, bidding for construction work, that kind of goes the other way. And that policy is based on the North Carolina general statutes that say that when you're looking to contract with a construction company to build something for you or renovate something for you, then you are required above a certain dollar threshold, really a pretty low threshold, to go with the lowest responsible bidder and really focus on price. You know, there is some room to have conversations sometimes depending upon the qualification of individual firms, but generally, for the actual work itself, you are locked into a low bid kind of situation. So, again, I just, I think this is all very timely for you all to have in front of you as, you know, you look ahead to spending capital dollars in the years ahead.
Yes.
Nick, do we have to, when they present these things to us, do they present just one bid? Or do they have to bring us like several? You know, I'm just curious to know.
Right.
What does the policy say about?
That's a great question, Dr. Jordan. And you'll see, you know, as work progresses and projects come before you all, a lot of times, you'll see in a bid tabulation, a base bid for like basic work, but then also, if there was a possibility of, oh, well, maybe we'd want to, you know, add a certain feature to a building, then you see alternatives. So, again, depending on how the bid process is structured, you may find yourself selecting a lowest base bid and possibly an alternative bid over here for some other feature or maybe to deduct something from the project. So, that's a great question.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If there's nothing else on that one, then we'll jump to 9200. And again, I think this policy is timely. Care and Maintenance of Facilities. Ms. Warner has raised this issue already today. And one of the things that comes through in this policy is that by statute, our principals who are charged with, you know, what goes on in their individual school buildings also have a statutory responsibility to stay on top of the condition of the buildings. And if there's any sort of safety issue, if work needs to be done, you've heard before numerous times in presentations from Ms. Brown's committee, how our maintenance process is driven by work order requests that go into operations from principals. So, this policy just reflects that general statute and that general way of doing business. The next policy that I flagged in this set, or really, the last one I flagged as essential, was 9220, Security of Facilities. And this just, again, you know, we've, y'all have had conversations about building security already this morning. This is the basic policy that sets your expectations as a board for maintaining security in your buildings. And it also includes things like making sure that on file with the state, we have schematic diagrams of the buildings, you know, in case, you know, heaven forbid, they were ever needed for various responding agencies or whatever, so.
Any questions or concerns? That's it? Okay, thank you. Moving right along to 1.05, Receive 9,000-Series Board Policies Not Revised in the Past 10 Years.
Thank you, Dr. Hales. The first one in this grouping, 9125, Participation by Minority Businesses. You all have heard about this and board has had questions about this process in the past. The main thing to know about this policy is that, that first general statute that's up there highlighted in blue, that's the basic North Carolina framework for this whole process. And this policy is just guided by that general statute. The other thing about this, at the very end, there's a reference to a Supreme Court case called City of Richmond versus J.A. Croson, and that's still the controlling US Supreme Court precedent on all this. And the basic idea is you're setting goals, their aspirations. I mean, we want to involve minority businesses and we spell out specific ways that, you know, we make the information available to folks when projects are coming online, about to be bid, and that sort of thing. But it's not by law, you know, some sort of formal or strict quota system. It's all of the languages and terms of goals. And again, that's consistent with the statute and the Supreme Court precedent. The next policy is 9130, Supervision of Construction Contracts. It's just a very short little policy. It's not really required by statute, but it does clarify that the superintendent, as your chief executive officer, is ultimately responsible for the construction that goes on in the district, for monitoring that construction. And that happens, of course, not only through Mr. Coleman's group, but again, through those architects, engineers, those design professionals that you contract with when you do construction. The next one is 9200. We've already talked about this. That's Care and Maintenance of Facilities. That one just hasn't changed over time. 9205 is one, I'll confess to you, I don't know a whole lot about the technicalities on, but it's, there is a strict statutory framework for all this. And that's referenced in this policy on pest management.
Ms. Brown?
Like you said, you don't know about pest management. But in the schools, I was in a school recently and they, it was explaining to Ms. Bell and myself that they had a rat problem. And so, how do we address that? I mean, do we contract someone to come out? And, okay.
We do have a contract with a exterminator in a situation if there's mice or rodents or anything like that. They go out with blue traps, like what you would do. So, we do have a contract.
Okay, and then I imagine from the principal's standpoint, but things in place about not giving food or doing these things. And, you know, that's probably hard to get the students not to bring food or to eat in the classroom or just to eat in cafeteria. But when you have a rat infestation and then.
I can't bring you food.
Term I think. That's, that's, you just don't take care of that overnight, correct?
We do have a person in place, Mr. Miles, that he goes out and educates about. And a lot of times, you'll find, anytime you find, it's where you, like a storage closet, or pantries, and classrooms where food is stored. So, we go out and educate the schools about that as well. That's a part of the program that he does.
And let me retract that. We don't have a rat infestation problem. I mean, you know, I don't want them to come out, but you know what I'm saying.
If there's a mouse here and there, it's not infant.
Yeah, it's not infant. Yeah, let me retract. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else on that policy, the last one, Dr. Hales, that has not been changed in the last 10 years is 9210, Care and Maintenance of Grounds and Outdoor Equipment. This is really focusing on the grounds and playground facilities, outdoor facilities adjacent to our school buildings. And you can see in the second paragraph, it incorporates recommendations from the Consumer Product Safety Commission, DPI, about including safe materials and safe conditions in those facilities. There's a specific reference further down that prohibits the use of chromated copper arsenate-treated wood. And in years past, I know, not necessarily schools, but some communities had these wooden playgrounds that were constructed out of that material. That's found to be hazardous, so. And then the references to the Americans with Disabilities Act, to, again, make sure that, you know, we're providing access for all our students with our facilities. And that would conclude the policies that have not been changed in the last 10 years.
Questions, concerns? Thank you. We're moving right along to 1.06. Consider Approval of Revised Policy 1310/4002, Parental Involvement, 2025, as required by House Bill 805.
Thank you, Dr. Hales. If we skip ahead to the top of page nine of this policy, and while we're doing that, I'll just tell you, this, this policy, in one form or another, has been on the books for years and years, but it became very lengthy and very detailed in the wake of the Parents' Bill of Rights legislation a couple of years ago. And so, just while we're talking about this particular policy, you can rest assured that just about all of this is actually lifted right from that Parents' Bill of Rights. And it's, you know, it's very detailed about parental consent in lots of different contexts. And one of them now that we're adding per House Bill 805 is that if there were ever some reason that students of the opposite sex would be sharing living quarters on a field trip or what have you, that there would have to be parental consent by all the parents concerned. That's that, is that prevent, yes, ma'am?
We have same sex too, don't we?
Did I misspeak? It's if they're of the opposite sex, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is being added to a long section on situations that require parental consent. And it's just saying if students share sleeping quarters with a member of the other biological sex, unless that person is a member of the student's immediate family. And you've already done a policy revision last month on, you see the reference there, the school trips and extracurriculars. This is just continuing that update process driven by that House bill. Just putting it in another place.
Yes.
Is this because of new, you know, thing now with the, what is it? The, the housing, like you can go and get like a house, you know, to sleep, you know, to go and on trips and stuff like that? I can't remember what it's called.
Airbnb.
Airbnb. Is that the reason why this thing came about? Or, I'm just curious.
No, no, I appreciate your question, Dr. Jordan. This is just my sort of 3,000-foot impression, and I don't have official legislative history in front of me, but there has been legislation around the country and state legislatures to try to, shall we say, emphasize traditional gender and sex roles and categories. And this is part of it that's come out of our General Assembly. I think what this is really getting at, I mentioned field trips, you know? In my mind, I'm always imagining, you know, the honors chorus trip to Greensboro or something, kids in hotel or motel rooms, you know, for, or a team trip, a team ever had to travel over or stay overnight. You know, those kinds of situations. They're just, the legislature is just being absolutely clear that, you know, the key concept there is the biological sex that the students were born with.
Yes, got it.
Yes, ma'am, and, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? That it for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving right along. Let's consider, yes. Let's, that's it, you're fine, you're fine. Okay, I, we will need a motion and a second to consider this item. Wait a minute.
I couldn't hear that.
In the middle of my motion. This motion. Excuse me. Do I have a second for this motion?
I didn't hear it, but I'll second it.
All right, the motion was made by Mrs. Brown. It was seconded by Mr. West. Let's vote. Thank you. Item 1.07, Consider Approval of Revised Policy 3620, Extracurricular Activities, Co-curricular Activities, and Student Organizations, 2025, as required by House Bill 805.
Thank you, Dr. Hales. Again, this is just inserting that language about the basic expectation, the basic policy that students who stay together in hotel rooms or motel rooms will be of the same biological sex they were born with, unless there's some specific exception in parental approval. And that language appears down at the bottom of the first page. So, again, just part of this update process driven by that legislation.
I make a motion to approve 1.07.
That's seconded.
The motion was approved by Mr. West and seconded by Mrs. Brown. Let's vote. Thank you. Are there any other committee concerns for the Policy Committee? Yes.
Dr. Hales, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, as a point of privilege, that with today's Policy Committee meeting, this board now has gone through the entire policy manual.
Yes, yes, yes. One year, one took us one year.
But I want to.
Took us one year.
Chairwoman Jones and Vice Chair Musgrave, because the idea to do this is something they brought back from the annual meeting in Greensboro last year. And also, of course, Dr. Hales, for getting on board with it and also being patient with me, you know, as we go through these Policy Committee agendas through the course of the year, some of which were, you know, pretty lengthy.
They were.
But, you know, she has always been there for me to, you know, review everything in advance. And, again, I just, for lots of reasons, compliance, because you have new board members. I just think it was a, I hope it was a valuable exercise for you all.
Yes.
Because it has been for many.
Yes, it was, it was. It was, thank you. My hats off to Mrs. Attorney Soka as well. So, we really appreciate that. And thank you all so much. If there's no other matters to come before this committee, we are. We are adjourned.
Thank you. I'll call the Budget Finance Committee to order herself, Ms. Bell, Ms. Musgrave is there here, Ms. Warner. Jay's coming up, and Molly's coming up. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Warner with the motion. Linda and Ms. Bell with the second to adopt the agenda. Thank you. And 1.03 is approving the minutes from the September 25th meeting.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Ms. Bell for the motion. Linda, Ms. Bell made the motion and Ms. Warner made the second. Thank you. 1.04, Jay, Consider Approval of Budget Amendments for Various Funds, 2526.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We, what you have before you is the first budget amendment of the year. And as you all know, we don't have a state budget. So, what DPI has done is they took both budgets and they allocated the money based on the lowest amount that was projected from each side, the House or the Senate. And so, that's why you see a pretty lengthy amendment based off of reconciled back to what we passed as the original resolution in June. So, you have that before you. I'll take any questions or ask for approval.
Any questions? Not like we have too much choice. If there's no questions, who wants to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments for various funds, 2025, 2026.
Ms. Bell. Warner with the second. Linda, Bell with the motion. Warner with the second. You're already there with the vote. Linda's getting faster and faster every week. Thank you. And I will receive a budget development calendar for 2627.
So, what you have before you is our proposed calendar. This is a, the one thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that this calendar is scheduled to end a month early than we've ended the previous years that I've worked with the superintendent to present the budget. I don't, I think we're gonna need some more time talking about looking at federal reductions and some possible state reductions. So, that's why I built in that extra month at the end before we have to turn it to the county for their consideration. Any questions?
And you don't think it's gonna squeeze us with enough time to review it? It just seems like, you know, sometimes we were rushed to get it to meet the commissioner deadline. So, I don't know if you can go back to the April.
So, the one thing that's interesting, though, is usually, we don't start the process until December. And so, as you all know, this is the first week in November. So, we are, we're starting a month ahead of schedule. I think we, the part where we might, it might become problematic is in April because that's when I've heard that the General Assembly's gonna take up some more votes. So, there might be information that's late to us. And that's always something that we contemplate because we have a statute that says when we have to have our budget to the county. And even though there's guidance in place for the state, they run longer than that. So, you've turned in your request to the county by law by the middle of May, and you really, you may not have any idea what the state's gonna fund us. And they're the biggest source of funds that we have. So, while we have that every year, I think this year's gonna be particularly interesting because of the income tax decreases and the state is forecasted to be $2 billion short next year, so. And remember, like, we've talked about, this isn't a recession. You know, usually, you see these type of numbers in a recession. But it's, it's a good thing and it's a bad thing with income tax cut.
Right. All right, sure calendar to run, Jay. So, we trust you on it. Any questions? This is a receive item, so. Here are no comments. Go with that one. Any other committee concerns for Jay? Budget Finance is adjourned. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
He tried. He's trying to go for the wall break.
I call to order the Curriculum Committee with, and taking the place of Ms. Musgrave today, Dr. Tara Jordan, Dr. Hales, and Susan Greaves. Good morning, ladies. Can I get a consideration to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt, second.
That was. Ms. Williams. Williams and Dr. Hales. A consideration, and let's vote.
Questionnaire.
Trying to be, trying to be great time.
You could forget it's on.
This is curriculum. You could forget it. Okay, all right, I'm just kidding, all right. 1.3, Consideration to. Uh, one point three, consideration to approve of the September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five curriculum committee meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve, second.
Dr. Hales and, I mean, Ms. Williams. And let's vote. And one point zero four, nutrition career development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So our first item to consider approval of National Development Month, CTE Facilitator Day, and I'll turn it over to Brittany Rins. All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so today I want to talk to you about our Career Development Month proclamation and our Career and Technical Education Facilitator Day. So November is deemed as National Career Development Month, and this focuses, this focus aligns directly with our strategic priority, number one, successful students, where we seek to graduate every student confident, competitive, and ready for a career, college, and life. And so with that, November, we celebrate all month long, November first through thirtieth, and career development gives students a chance to explore their career interests as well as link those interests to their future career plans. We have a proclamation here where the month of November is recognized by the National Association of Career Development as Career Development Month. Um, North Carolina also values the need for career development at an early age, um, and has also proclaimed November as Career Development Month for North Carolina. Um, this work would not be possible without the diligent efforts of our career development coordinators, our CTE facilitators as well, and we also celebrate them not only just in November, but also in February during CTE month. This year, our team decided to create a Google site for Career Development Month and to help students and educators to be able to roll out a plan that includes going through the major clarity process, which major clarity is our academic and career readiness platform that we use for grades five through twelve. Um, here's where we also house our career development plans, which is mandated by North Carolina law for students to have one of these plans primarily in grades eight, where they must be created and then revised again in grade ten. And so in this web, in this Google site, we have a tab for elementary, middle, and high school. And we also focus these tasks that we've created based on the major clarity task completions for career development plans and for grades, and that's for grades five through twelve, and for K through four, we also offer resources and sample activities that schools can implement. And these are the major days for this month, so again, November first through thirtieth is Career Development Month. No, Career Development Week is November seventeenth through the twenty first, and then our Career Professionals Today is November nineteenth for Cumberland County Schools. Are there any questions?
Any questions? We need approval, consider to approve approval of the National Career Development Month, CTE Facilitator Day.
I make a motion to approve, second.
Oh, I mean, Dr. Just go ahead.
All right, let's vote. Thank you.
That's unanimous.
All right, one point five, uh, two thousand and twenty six, retest options.
All right, this item is also for your consideration, and Kim Nash will review this for us.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, uh, retest this year, the, um, there have been some changes, obviously still aligned with our strategic priorities. But in the past, I've brought this to you as project success, so the state is shifting somewhat. And they are allowing retest within the actual testing window. And another, these are, I'm highlighting some differences with this, so we will be able to retest our students before they get out for school, so, um, it'll be offered to any EOC or EOG student who was not proficient. This year, it also includes third grade reading, which it has not in the past, the only ones eligible for that in the past were those that failed to meet the read to achieve legislative requirements, and then also to our Extend One students. So those, um, students who have an IAP, who have an alternate assessment, will also be afforded the opportunity to retest. So with this couple of, of pieces, parents and legal, or legal guardians have to grant permission. So we are already with our high schools who test in just a few weeks, we are already sending out moves to those parents asking them if my child is not proficient, do they have my permission to take a retest? And some other changes, well, obviously, not a change, but students cannot be, or students must be held harmless if they choose and if their parents choose for them not to participate. But another big shift is that in the past, our high schools, for our end of course assessment, whatever grade they scored the first time, whether or not they retested in the past, that was the grade that was used as twenty percent of their calculation for their grade. This year, if they take a retest and score higher, that grade may be used as part of that calculation. So additional incentive for those high school children to come in and retest. So the retest options, as outlined to us, they can either retest during the legislative window. So for example, our high schools have the last five days of their semester to, to give their EOC assessments. So a retest during the school year would have to take place within that window. Now, there is an exception and a little bit of, of differing rules for English too, because those scores take a little bit longer to get back. But, um, that's the general idea, and for our elementary and middle schools, it will be the last ten days of the school year, and for any year-long courses. The second option is to run a summer program. With the summer program, the state is saying this year that that summer program has to be a minimum of eight days of remediation before you give the assessments. The third option is a combination of both, which is what we are wanting to do in Cumberland County. Our plan, what we want to do is capture as many students as we can during the testing window. However, we're coming to you for consideration to run that summer program if we are unable to capture all of the students within that window, to have that option, to have that summer program after school for eight days of remediation before they retest. And, um, you know, again, with that, only option, only available to students who are not proficient, and they can only retest once. So they couldn't retest during the school year and then come back and retest again in the summer. So they can retest once per subject, so, you know, if a child is not proficient on reading and math in elementary school, they could test again for reading and math, so for each assessment. So we are, um, bringing this to you for your consideration, some of the impacts on accountability measures. If the students retest within the school year, within that testing window, their score, the higher of the two score would count for both achievement and for growth for the school. If they test during the summer program, it would only account for achievement. So another reason why we want to capture as many students as we can during those legislative windows, um, because when they take it in the summer, all of that information has already been sent over to EVOS, and the summer, a summer assessment will be too late to be captured in that growth. So that is, is a little picture of what it would look like and how it would impact our accountability measures. And we did also just include the memo with all of the intricacies and all of the different pieces. So we are bringing this to you today for your consideration to approve that summer program if necessary. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve, second.
Let's vote. Very good explanation, thank you so much.
Thank you. Miss, okay, there we go.
One point zero six, uh, purchase agreement with NWN Corporation for Technology Infrastructure Modernization.
Couldn't have said it better myself, good morning.
All right.
How's everybody doing?
I had to put my glasses on, couldn't see, little, little, little print on this.
This morning, I'm bringing two consider items to you for consideration. First one is our data center refresh, and we did use the Choice Partners RFP twenty one opportunity contract in order to secure the lowest pricing for that data center refresh. This is going to be a crucial investment to this district because, um, it's going to modernize our core data center. It's going to replace aging hardware that we're going to speak about momentarily. It's going to maximize the return on investment that we put in, hopefully, and it will absolutely lower our total cost of ownership and ensure the reliability and performance of all mission-critical systems. The second consider item will be our network core infrastructure that we want to upgrade, and we also utilized a state contract for that to obtain the lowest pricing available, and that dispurchase will guarantee high performance, reliability, and security across the district for the next several years. So why do we need a infrastructure modernization request? Well, our existing data center has been in place since two thousand and thirteen, and it is definitely end of life. In order for us to maintain our current outdated platform, it's proven to be financially inefficient because the licensing costs are now set to be three hundred percent higher than previous years. In two thousand and twenty three, to support that, we paid approximately nineteen thousand four hundred and forty eight dollars. In two thousand and twenty four, we paid thirty three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, and it's projected that in this year, we'll have to pay sixty two thousand three hundred and ninety four dollars. So as you can see, the price to maintain this out-of-date equipment is continuing to rise. So running unsupported hardware also creates significant cybersecurity and compliance risks, and because it is outdated hardware, it's hard to get support for, so if it goes down, it will severely impact the district as these servers perform critical functions district-wide. So again, the project is a critical lifecycle refresh of our data center. Um, the goal is to establish a modern, intelligent infrastructure that fully supports the district's current operations while providing the flexibility needed to meet future technology demands. If we proactively upgrade our data center now, we can avoid the high costs, downtime, and disruptions that come with aging or failed hardware, ensuring continuous and secure service delivery for our schools and departments. So the first one, as, as you can see, is our data center refresh, and we went with NWN Corporation on that. The approximate cost is one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety five, one hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and ninety five dollars and eighty seven cents. Now, the cost breakdown for that price is we're going to get all of the hardware, we'll get thirty six months of software licensing and twenty-four seven hardware support. The professional services are fixed amount for this, um, project, which are twenty eight thousand fifty three dollars and sixteen cent. That's going to cover the installation, the configuration, and the migration support from our current system to this new system. What happens after this three-year contract is up, that you, you might ask? Well, our year four cost would be a hundred and nine thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-two, and then our twenty-four seven four would be three thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. So we can long-term budget, uh, for the renewal, factored in ten percent growth. So in summary, approving this refresh for the data center moves us from a reactive, crisis-prone state to a proactive, stable, and modern IT environment. It will protect our continuity of operations and our investment in technology. So in other words, this infrastructure will remain in place and be supported by the manufacturer long after I have retired from this district. Which is a long time from now. So on our next one, the network core infrastructure, our, this project is going to replace our aging core infrastructure, which is literally the heart or the central nervous system of the district's network. This new architecture is explicitly designed to ensure stable operation, guaranteeing reliable access to online resources for all students and staff across the district. If we install these high-capacity core switches, we can future-proof our infrastructure, provide new stability and speed, fully support all digital learning and cloud services, significantly increase network speed and throughput, resolve existing bottlenecks, and dramatically reduce our risk of district-wide network failure. We also went with NWN Corporation on this, again, using the NC two oh four X state contract. Now, this entire network cutover is stoked for a single onsite migration network. The vendor's detailed multi-phase plan is designed for a minimally disruptive migration with the new system configured to operate in parallel before we make the final switch to the new system. The core hardware total is seventy five thousand six hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents. That's going to include our core routers, our power supplies, the memory, and three years of licensing and support. The install services for this project are eleven thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. That's going to cover all the project management, the preparation, the staging, and the migration services from the old hardware to the new hardware. Again, we'd like to look down the road, so the year four cost would be thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and only three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a one-year renewal. So with that, if there are any questions about these two projects, I'd be happy to entertain those now.
Any questions? I just have one question, when will this, uh, switch take place if we are committed to this?
If these two consider items are approved, these switches will take place as soon as we can schedule the time with the vendor to come down, and we can also ensure that there will be no downtime to the district or to instructional learning when these transitions occur. We are also open to weekend, um, hours, as we have a project coming up in the month of December. Till, um, everyone goes home on winter break to get completed, because the last thing we want to do is interrupt instruction.
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, consideration to approve the purchase agreement with, uh, NWN Corporation.
I make the motion to approve this purchase agreement, second.
Dr. Hales and Ms. Williams. Everybody, let's vote. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you all for your consideration and your time, I hope you all have a wonderful day.
You too, dear.
Uh, one point zero seven, approval of purchase agreement with learning dot com for K eight, K through eight digital literacy.
Thank you. I will turn this consideration for approval over to Pamela Simmons.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, we are requesting approval to renew our district's subscription to learning dot com for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, the renewal supports our district's growth in digital literacy, online safety, and responsible technology use. Learning dot com is funded through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, based on session law two thousand and twenty-three, one thirty-four, and they grant those funds to tier one and tier two counties every year to foster our student growth in those digital learning skills listed. This platform also allows us to track our SIPA compliance for our K eight students as part of federal law. We are seeking approval for this purchase agreement, and just as a side note, it's not in these current slides. Um, but next year, House Bill nine fifty-nine is going to affect, which is requiring us to have a digital learning platform that focuses on social media and online safety, and learning dot com with very specific lessons such as social media and how you feel and finding balance in a digital world, um, finding credible news sources, um, social media and your digital footprint, and dealing with cyberbullying, and those types of issues will, um, help support our progress in adhering to that law. As of this year so far, we ask for thirty thousand licenses every year. Last year, we used, I believe, thirty thousand one hundred and twenty-six, so we went slightly over, they did not charge us anything extra for those additional licenses. So far this year, we are at, as of this morning, twenty thousand nine hundred and fifty of our students are active, so we have about two-thirds of our licenses used already this year, and we have just under two hundred and fifty thousand launches in the program for students. The total cost is six dollars and twenty-eight cents per license, as I said, we asked for thirty thousand licenses, they go to all of our K eight schools. It's a total of one eighty-five, four hundred, hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, and that money is granted to us from NCDPI through budget code PRC zero seventy-eight. Do we have any questions?
I do. Help me understand exactly how beneficial is this program? I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm going, I'm saying no, but how beneficial? I, I'm thinking specifically of our low-performing schools, okay? How beneficial or how well have we monitored the benefits of this program?
The benefits of this program are through our student digital citizenship and online safety, um, as well as computer skills. So there's like your basic keyboarding and so on in there as well. So there's like your basic keyboarding and so on in there as well. The platform itself has two components. One is its Tech Quest program, which is kind of like a gamified where students complete steps in like an arcade and earn rewards. And that is the component that leads to our SIPA compliance. It covers our digital citizenship, it covers our online safety, cyberbullying, social media platforms. So it's benefits our students overall, overall well-being. As well as their responsible use of technology. And their understanding of consequences of use of technology, such as like their digital footprint. The other side of the platform is a library of lessons that teachers can assign. C T E can use them, classroom teachers can use them, our media coordinators can use them as well. And those are specific topics and it has different components to each lesson and they could assign the components that are relevant. So there are those teacher-assigned lessons as well as the Tech Quest self-paced.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, concerns? Do we know how many teachers are really using this program?
Yes, we have right now fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty of our student launches are teacher-assigned lessons.
It is a consider.
I move to approve. Second.
Let's vote.
Ashwin. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, one point eight, approve of purchase agreement for additional instructional materials with H M H. Math.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Craig Lawson first, I believe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as with everything we do, we want to ensure alignment with our strategic priorities, in particular, one A, one B and one C. When making decisions regarding our instructional materials. The board policies that are specific to purchasing instructional materials are linked here again for your reference. And throughout our textbook adoption and purchasing process, we have worked diligently to adhere to all board policies. So since our original purchase of materials for grades K twelve math and grade six twelve E L A back in June. It's come to our attention that there's a need for some additional materials to best meet the needs of our schools. To help our instructional leadership teams and E C resource teachers best support students and teachers. We're seeking approval to purchase two additional sets of print teacher editions per grade level. For H M H into math and McGraw-Hill Study Sync, which is K six through twelve. Currently, these personnel have access to all of the resources digitally. But we've heard from schools that due to all of the different scaffolds and interventions and enrichments that are found in the manual. That can be challenging to find on the, the, the platform. That it would be advantageous for them to have their own set of manuals for P L Cs and planning and, and, and helping train their teachers. So the cost for all schools to receive two additional sets of into math manuals for each grade level is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-two and eighty-six cents. The cost for all schools to receive two additional sets of McGraw-Hill manuals is fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty dollars and twelve cents. We're also seeking approval to purchase eight additional sets of math one with foundational supports teacher editions. And five hundred sets of student additions to support two of our larger high schools. The math one with foundational supports course, it's a new course in C C S this year. It weaves together N C math one with foundations of N C math one into a cohesive year-long course. That provides students with two high school math credits. Principals were asked to opt into piloting this last spring before materials were purchased. Since the original order of materials, two of our high schools have reached out with the desire to offer this course to their students. Currently, those students and classrooms are using the digital versions of the curriculum, which are available. But it's really designed to have students write and complete assignments in the consumable workbooks. So the cost to support those two high schools is forty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Also note on that, the math one books that they currently have will be retrieved and we'll use those next year. So we'll be able to deduct that from next year's math book purchase. And then finally, we're seeking approval to purchase N W E A map growth licenses for fifth and eighth grade science. To better help schools identify needs and provide targeted instruction in fifth and eighth grade science. And the cost for that, for all of that together is two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And we'll take any questions that you all have.
Dr. Hells.
Okay, I see that you're ordering teacher manuals or teacher editions rather. I know that we all expect the teachers to be well-equipped. To know what they are reading and how to present the information and teach the children point-blank. But is there any consideration to having workshops with these? Thank you, thank you so very much. Is H still Hugh, H M? With Holt Mithlin, yeah, Holt Mithlin, still Holt Mithlin, okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have, I mean, I just wanted to make sure you address, oh, the reason, I, cause I asked her last night, I said, well, why wasn't these books purchased? When we first did the order? Can you address that? Can someone address?
So there was the option to opt in for schools, for those coherent math resources. There was an option for schools to, to utilize those and opt in for us to place that order at the original time we replaced in the order. And those that did, we were, they were included in our original order. These were two additional schools that requested since we placed that first order.
But in terms of the teacher manuals also, we, we have access to all of the manuals digitally. So we purchased manuals for every teacher who had their own classroom. So E C self-contained teachers, if I was a, just a regular math teacher, I got my own manual. We did not include the resource teachers that go from classroom to classroom and pull students across grade levels. And so that's the addition. We, in our minds, we were thinking having access to the digital would be enough for them. But they really feel like teaching with the manual in their hand is what they want to see. So that's where we're at, yep.
Thank you. All right, consideration to approve the purchase agreement for additional instructional materials with H M H.
Move to approve. I second that.
Ms. Williams and Dr. Hells. Let's vote. Thank you all. One point zero nine, approval of service agreements with National Training Network, N T N, for job embedded coaching.
So National Training Network is a company that we have worked with over the last several years. To provide targeted support to our math teachers. They have a cadre of math coaches and math professional developer, developers. That are familiar with our, our resources, familiar with our schools and have supported. High school and middle school math teachers for several years. This year, we've got four schools. We've got four schools that, and, and the, these coaches come in and work individually with the teachers. They work in P L Cs and they provide lesson study or lesson internalization. Professional development to the teachers that they're supporting as well. This year, we have got four schools that are looking at. I apologize, five schools, we had a late addition. We have got five schools that are, are seeking to purchase services through N T N. Luther Nick Gerald, Westover High, Westover Middle, Seventy-first High and Reed Ross Classical. Last year, Westover High and Middle and Seventy-first. Used N T N coaching for their math teachers and saw significant gains. Upwards of ten-plus points in their math. One and their overall at Westover Middle math proficiency. So we feel like this is a really good resource and tool for schools that have the funds to purchase the services. So we are requesting that schools use their school budgeted funds. For a total of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars across all five of those schools for these services.
So what about other schools who have obviously not done well in math? I mean, you're saying they're going to use school funds, but. I guess my thing is, there's more schools than that that need help. So how, what's being done, I guess is my point.
So part of that is what we discussed last week in our retreat is looking at providing professional development and coaching to our lowest-performance schools. So that's a piece that's going to come because that's both that math and literacy, just making sure that we have the structures and the support for our instructional leadership teams. The other piece is, this is principal-directed. So the leaders of the schools said that this was best and aligned to their school improvement plan. So other principals have other interventions. And I think that Dr. Fields and her team are also working with school leaders to make sure that they have their funds aligned to their school improvement goals.
Thank you. I know that, thank you, I know that we try to work very closely with the administrators, the principals, et cetera, et cetera. But if you know that you have a product that is really, really working and that will work. And we will be the best for our students, because like we always say, the students are my priority. With your, and I'm trying to say it in a way so that no one will be offended. However, sometimes choices and decisions will have to be made without others' input. If we know that it's working well. Now, the other part of my question is, school collaborative planning, was it done in advance? Has it been done?
For the, the services?
For the services.
Yeah, so the C and I, the math specialist that supports those schools. Has met with the instructional leadership teams and kind of mapped out what that's going to look like. And we also have a place where the N T N coaches track their visits for us. So that, so that my team can follow up with the math teachers between visits. And just to speak to the, the question about other schools. We've got some schools that have really great math multi-classroom leaders that they were able to hire. Or math coaches that they were able to hire. And so they've, they've made the decision not to pay the, the high cost of providing an external person come in. To pay the salary of a, a math person that can be dedicated to support their school every single day. And so we do have some schools that, while math is definitely a focus. They have made the decision to hire either a math coach internal. Or a math multi-classroom leader that could support their teachers in a similar way that N T N is. So I just wanted to share that as well.
Any other questions? We need consider, this is a consider item, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, consider to approve the services agreement for the National Training Network, N T E. N T N for job embedded coaching. And I just want to make sure that this is not coming out of averages, coming out of schools. Okay, all right, let's vote.
We gotta have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion, please, thank you.
A motion to approve. I second that motion.
All right, Williams and Dr. Hells. We can vote. All right, uh, one point ten, receive arts education program update.
Lastly, we have for you some information from Dr. McLeod at our arts program.
Good, is it still morning? Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, before Dr. McLeod just starts, I do want to take this moment to formally introduce him. He started with us as director of arts in June and has hit the floor running. So he's doing a great job and is going to share with you some highlights about the end of last year with our arts program and things that are happening right now. But we welcome him, we're glad he's a part of the team and the floor is yours.
Excellent.
Before you begin, I'd like to welcome you to our.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much and, and good morning to all of you. And thank you for taking, allowing me to take this moment to share with you just a few of the truly wonderful things happening across our schools. From the youngest students discovering their talent in visual arts to our high school students that are achieving state recognition. So my first action in this role was visiting the summer band and orchestra workshops. We had over a hundred and thirty band students and ninety orchestra students registered for our workshops. This was especially exciting considering in two thousand twenty-four, there were only ninety band students and fifty orchestra students registered. So I'm confident with early publicity, we will be able to see an increase for our two thousand twenty-six workshops. And that number will continue to increase. These workshops, I think, really exemplify a commitment to our strategic priorities and our community engagement. Our first countywide arts event was the marching band showcase on October twenty-first at Westover High School. All of our high school band programs participated except for Douglas Bird. And that was only due to the band director transitioning from a long-term substitute status to a certified teacher. So just with the logistics, we, they weren't able to make it to this competition, but he's really excited. Really enthusiastic about leading that program. So I'm certain that we will have all twelve of our, our programs represented next year when we get to, get to that showcase. Looking ahead at some of our other opportunities, the Cumberland County Youth Orchestra is an audition honors group that meets for most of the year. They have their auditions in September and they're preparing for their first concert in November, November twentieth. Probably goes without saying that November is a big month for the arts, there's a, a lot of things happening, a lot of concerts happening for sure. Speech and debate is alive and well, so we're happy that we had representation, representation from our district. At the national competition earlier in the summer. And to that note, we're really excited that Pine Forest, for the first time in several years. Hosted a regional tournament in late, or excuse me, early October. So things are going really well and the middle school is gearing up for their first, first tournament in the near future. For all county band, they had their auditions last night. There were over four hundred students that showed up to audition. One hundred and sixty will have been selected for their all-county concert on November fifteenth. Similarly, all county orchestra held their auditions in, in not very long ago. And their concert is this month as well on November twenty-second. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, the fifth graders around the district will attend a performance of The Lightning Thief. By Percy Jackson musical, and it will take place at the Crown Theater. And that production is being put on by Cape Fear Regional Theater. And we're really excited about this one, especially as we start to think about literacy and the connection to the book series and, and this performance. So we're hopeful that that performance will inspire some of those young people to, to seek out those, seek out those books. As we get to the end of the year, we'll see a little bit more of our visual arts programs highlighted. But I encourage you to look around the building here on the lower level. Just recently, the artwork was refreshed, which displays elementary through high school student artwork. And to celebrate some of our students' success, several students from the county will be performing this weekend. At the North Carolina Music Educators Conference in Winston-Salem. As part of the North Carolina Honors Chorus and Orchestra. These are a few of the middle school students on the slide, but, but there are quite a few students that are going to represent our county at that, at that event. It's a state-level honor and it's, it's, we're really proud of them. Any questions?
Any comments? The band, I know you went.
Could tell you that both of my grandsons made all county, but I won't.
I know you went to the band thing.
Oh, yeah. And I was gonna say, thank you, everybody, for your support of the arts program. I know that we've seen many of your faces at those programs and you will always get invites from us to be able to. I know that we've seen many of your faces at those programs and you will always get invites from us to be able to see the great things that our students are doing throughout the district. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be at Honors Chorus Sunday. Wonderful. Because my granddaughter. You're not telling us.
I'm not saying it.
You're not saying it.
I'll see you there.
Anything else you want to share with us? That's, I think that wraps it up.
Anyone else wanna share about their grandbabies?
One, two, three.
All right, anyone else, anyone else? All right. No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, and welcome aboard again.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, uh one point eleven, consider other committee concerns.
Time now.
All right, this is Jersey, uh one point ten, this is Jersey. Second committee.
Thank you. It's us. Thank you, Ruben, I was just like, yes, sir, I've been waiting. Yeah, that's right, last but not least, that's exactly right. Join the meeting, if you've not done so already, members of the committee. Are myself. Ms. Gray is not here today and Ms. Warner, uh one point zero two, um I'll make a motion to consider adoption of the agenda. Motion by myself, second by Ms. Warner, and we'll take a vote. Thank you, one point zero three, consider approval of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five Personnel Committee Meeting Minutes.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. Hales.
Second.
Second by Ms. Warner, we'll take a vote. Okay, one point zero four, consider approval Personnel, good morning, Ruben. Um, this looks like the standard or it looked like the standard.
This is our standard personnel list that covers a variety of positions, um certified and classified all throughout the district, just asking for the board's consideration and approval.
Anybody have a question?
Yes, all of these are part-time?
No, ma'am, these are all full, these are a variety of positions.
Teaching on a contract, part-time, but then. Okay, gotcha.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion uh by Dr. Hales and second by Ms. Warner, take a vote. Yes, you may. One point zero five, consider approval of leave of absence request and special leave of absence.
Uh, these two, these two uh documents before you are a list of individuals that had uh medically related leaves of absences. And then there's one for the special ed or the special ED LOA, which is an individual who's gonna be doing their student teaching next semester.
I make a motion to approve one point zero five.
A second.
And I'm, a second from Dr. Hales, we'll take a vote. Yes, you may. One point zero six is consider approval of administrative recommendation.
So the, this, for this particular item, Ms. Williams, uh these, this is a recommendation for assistant principal position that was submitted to us by the school. This is, um, I've included the resume in there as well.
Any questions?
And may I say something, I apologize, I have not read them because I have an issue with my computer at home, but it's okay. Thank you for, when I ask questions, for answering, I appreciate that.
There is any time, thank you.
Can we get a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Dr. Hales made a motion, I'll second it and we'll take a vote. And one point zero seven, consider approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six teacher supplement schedule, say it louder.
Thank you.
Move directly into the speaker.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, so, um, again, we wanna focus on, on our strategic, strategic priorities and, and this is one of those items that really touches. All of our strategic priorities, while we think about premier professionals. Um, you all know that having competent, caring, connected individuals in our schools is what's gonna move this district forward. Um, the first slide that I have really to discuss is, is a, a slide that you have seen before. Um, as we went through our budgeting process last year. Um, this was, there was a great deal of discussion with our county commissioners with respect to where Cumberland County ranks. With regards to our local teacher supplement. Um, the slide that you see here um depicts where we are from, uh from a local standpoint. Our average local supplement um used to be the highest in the region. Um, currently, based on, on where we are, we are in the bottom quartile. Um, over time, individual districts around us has, have raised their supplement. While we've made some very small changes over the last um ten years, there's not been anything significant. Uh, then complicated by the fact that the state has instituted a state low, what they call the low well, small district supplement. Uh, when you combine those two figures together, that actually drops Cumberland County schools to, to the bottom. Um, if you, if you look right there, the average supplement um for, for our district. Um, is about five thousand thirty-three dollars, whereas uh the, the number one ranking district is over eight thousand dollars. Uh, we had a large, a lot of discussion last year's with, with our county commissioners and the board. Um, really did a great job of advocating for us as a school district. Which culminated in us receiving an additional eleven point four million dollars just for the teacher supplement. We did receive um an additional two point four million for our classified supplement. Um, for the teacher supplement, one of the things we wanted to look at is how do we structure our scale? And one of the things that I've provided for you is just a year-over-year comparison to teacher salary. Um, over the last four years, the General Assembly has really slanted their raises for the teachers um to the beginning of the scale. So when you look at level zero, so that zero, those are different people every year because those individuals, that's the first time they've ever taught in a classroom period. Has, that level on the scale has received a fifteen point six percent increase over the last four years. Um, if you go all the way down to the bottom at a teacher, for a teacher with twenty-five years of experience. Uh, over that same time span, you've received, those teachers have received a six point two percent increase. If I were to go back a decade, you would see this and the numbers would get more disparate. And so one of the things is, um, as we did, as we worked on the, the supplement schedule. Is we wanted to take that into consideration with a focus on our more experienced teachers. Uh, to ensure that um we kind of counteract what the General Assembly has done with regards to this, to the teacher's schedule. What you see before you here on, on, on the screen now is our proposed base, what we call our base teacher supplement schedule. Um, so at the, at the zero level, which again, those are those teachers that um are brand new to the field of teaching. Um, those teachers would receive a one thousand dollar increase. So the smallest increase to our supplement that we're proposing is a thousand dollars. Um, and what we tried to do was focus on counteracting the, the teacher scale that I showed before. So what we're doing is we're providing larger increases in the supplement as we continue to cascade down the scale. So teachers with more experience receive a little bit more in their supplement. Um, I've highlighted a couple because those are what I call, those are the, those are the big bands where you start seeing. Um, uh like longevity, for, for longevity purpose. So um, a teacher with ten years of experience would receive a twenty-two hundred dollar increase in their local supplement. Um, fifteen would be twenty-eight hundred dollars, twenty would be thirty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-five would receive fifty-four hundred dollars. Uh, culminated by a, a teacher with thirty years of experience receiving an increase of six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. So for a teacher with thirty years of experience, when you factor in the fifteen hundred and twenty-three dollar state supplement. Um, they will, they will receive a supplement of fourteen thousand one hundred twelve dollars. Um, what this does is this effectively allows them to carry their ten months of pay for twelve months. Um, which, so you look at a, a, a thirty-year teacher making close to seventy thousand dollars a year here in Cumberland County schools. Um, and that's purposeful, number one, um, we, we need our more experienced teachers to help support the changing workforce that we have. Uh, when we hire teachers that are alternatively licensed or maybe coming from other states or beginning teachers or international teachers. The teachers at the school level with the most experience are typically the ones that we lean on the most to help support those teachers. So um, this is a focus to help us keep our more experienced teachers and to attract more experienced teachers from our surrounding district. Uh, our surrounding districts. Um, I believe Mr. Tolan has shared um previously that this would leave us um as the number one district, not only in local average. Um, but when you combine all sources, all the districts that kind of touch us. Um, especially uh would, we, we would be number one, especially for the top end of the scale. So a lot of districts have a, what they call flat scales based on a percentage. What we, uh, the board has done here, um, going back before I started in this position. Was to have a actual schedule versus it being a flat percentage-based scale. So this reflects the fact that um other districts, while they may have a eight percent or a nine percent supplement. Um, that's based on the base salary, what, what this proposed scale does is it would make us significantly higher. Especially for those more experienced teachers, which is, I think, our focus. So just think about it from a recruitment and retention standpoint of um kind of the slogan, Cumberland County schools where experience matters. Because I, I think we're, we're pouring into our more experienced teachers. Um, again, this would, uh, this does reflect a full um use of the eleven point four million dollar county appropriation. Uh, and um if, as, as we pay these at the end of the year, we will be able to report back to the county with regards to the expenditures for these areas.
Oh, sorry, I'm just smiling, I can't sleep after that.
Any questions?
Not a question, it's more of a statement. And I want to say thank you to Ruben and your team, Jay and your team, um, the previous board. Uh, that was our focus last year, after last year's budget, that was our focus. And I would also like to thank the current board members for continuing it so we can all uh get to this point. Um, so I just want to say thank you to all.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
I make that motion to approve.
I just, she made it.
Would you like to second it?
I'll second, yeah, yes.
And we're gonna vote, and I've got a feeling it's gonna be okay.
Since we have two motions, okay? For the same one.
All right, Lindsay, start putting it out there.
I raised my hand, but you didn't say it.
Yes, you may, I'm sorry, Greg.
Well, and it's more about giving a shout out to our county commissioners for doing.
Yes, yes.
And so go back to slide three, if you haven't closed the deck out, but that's the one that we showed them with the yellow header, regional statistics. It showed where we were at the bottom. And almost like, and it's up y'all, but I'd almost like to see you do the updated one with twenty twenty-five or twenty-six, whatever years from going to effect. And show them and then share it with them. And put that, you know, because of the eleven point four million dollar fully funded. Now, I think I have the graphic and then it may be able to be used. Lindsay, you know, share it with them specifically and thank them on our behalf, but then. Ruben, how will you use this? Because, I mean, for the ones we've lost to HOPE now. We're a hundred dollars more, so that two thousand dollars they went to HOPE for, they should come back, you know, because they're not traveling. And then, you know, we're twelve hundred more than Bladen and Hornet for the surrounding ones, so I mean, for what practical says, how do you see using it?
Well, I think from a recruitment standpoint, so those are just averages, so when we, when we report to the state, we report averages. So I would focus more on the, hey, if you're a twenty-five-year teacher or you're a thirty-year teacher, you come back, you worked for us four years, you bank your high. You're gonna bank a higher salary, which means not only are you making more now, but that's something that you will see forever. And so um, that's where I'm gonna have to lean on my friend Dr. Whitley, because that's a mouthful, I need a catchy slogan to really focus. But that's how we're gonna really target folks, is because it's not only realizing the immediate effects, but this can have a long-term impact.
For the rest of your life, that's how I would phrase it, make more for the rest of your life. But however you're gonna reach that, teacher in Bladen County.
So currently what we do is when we start recruitment, um, number one, we post our fires and everything everywhere. But then we also use social media nowadays to target people. So when you go in, what we do is we run the algorithms to say, I wanna target people based on their social media profiles. Who live in this district, this district, this district, that have an interest in teaching, that are current teachers. And then, um, so when you, if you use Facebook, for example, I'll just use that, you see all these ads pop up. And sometimes you're like, man, they must be listening to what I'm saying, and some of it is part of that, but then it's because they look at your profiles and what you search for. And their algorithm attacks, attaches advertisements to that, so we, we will be doing some of that as well.
I appreciate that, Curry, but he'd be bold and, and aggressive with it and good luck.
I'm excited about it.
You can hear about money, it'll come up.
All right.
Before we move on from this one, I just would like to point out too, um, not to gloss over it, but there was also a, a big investment made for our classified staff. And so those individuals will receive, uh, their supplement went from two percent to six percent, so that's a trip, that's a three hundred percent increase. And Mr. Tolan shared with me, based on his research, uh, no one can touch us in the region for classified stuff. So just sharing, two percent to six percent. And so we didn't need a scale, because it's percentage-based, but I did, I did not want to let that pass. Because um, that, that was part of the, the total uh, um, this funding from the county commissioners.
Ruben, thank you, you deserve it, I mean, county commissioners, thank you all.
All right. All right, okay. One point zero eight. I'm gonna make a motion to go into closed session to preserve the confidentiality of matters protected from disclosure pursuant to GS one fifteen C dash three nineteen. And GS one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A one, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS one forty-three. Three, dash, three eighteen eleven A three, can I get a second?
Second.
Dr. Hales is doing a second, we'll take a vote.
We're done.
We're at a closed session. Okay, thank you. One point ten, consider approval of superintendent's administrative recommendation.
Motion to approve superintendent's administrative recommendation.
Second.
Got you.
Ms. Warner.
That's correct.
That's your unanimous.
Alright. And one point eleven, consider other committee concerns.
I have no additional concerns.
Anybody else? I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Alright, I'll adjourn the personnel committee.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Because of Veterans Day on the eleventh, on the eleventh, our regular board meeting is November tenth at six P M. Please join us. And if there are no more concerns, this meeting is now adjourned.